Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. This Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the rule, please, to establish a court?
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mercheneer?
Here.
Councilmember Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
I am here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I'm here. Good afternoon to everyone. I would ask Jennifer Venema, she's on Zoom at this point, who is our climate change leader on the city management side, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would be honored to, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
For all. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for getting us started, members. We again have a full calendar tonight. Hopefully, we won't go as long as last Tuesday, but we will see. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there items that members would like to either take off the consent calendar or comment on? I know I want to comment on item number two. It I don't require a separate vote, but I would like to-
I have a comment on item six, Mayor.
To comment, did you say?
Yeah. Yeah, you don't have to pull it off.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a comment on item two, also on item six, and I and I need to ask staff if we need to remove item 10 for my direction.
Are you saying that you have some comments on 10 and you want to know whether or not your comments or suggestions might require it being taken off the-
Yeah, correct.
-the calendar?
Yes, correct.
Well, why don't we wait? Why don't you make the comments and then-
Okay.
Then 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 we'll see what what the response is, okay? Any other members?
So two, six, and 10 for me, Mayor. Two, six, and 10.
Two, six, and 10. Very good.
I'd like to pull nine, please.
You want to pull nine and have it be voted on separately?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, did you already pull item number 10?
It's not pulled, but Mayor Protem Ashby had some comments that might require it to be voted on separately. We're not sure yet.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to you want to comment or have it be taken up separately?
Let's just pull it because I think I'm gonna I think we're I think I'm gonna make a different recommendation.
Okay, so so let's take up item item 10 separately, and we're gonna take up items nine and 10 separately. Okay. I would take a motion then, and we're gonna make comments on 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 the items we talked about. I take a motion on the consent calendar, items one through eight and 11 through 15, please.
So move, Mayor.
Okay. There's a second by Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Jennings, and Councilmember Harris. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one caller.
Let's hear from the caller.
May I have the caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller.
Hello, my name is David Guerrero. Yes, hi. My name is David Guerrero. I'd like to make a remark on item 14 of the consent calendar, North Gate Boulevard corridor study. First, I want to thank Councilman Harris for for pushing this item and getting it to the table to the point we are now. Thank you Gardeland North Gate Neighborhood Association for keeping on top of this. Gardeland North Gate is a quarter that needs immediate attention. We've seen multiple crashes, pedestrians getting hit. So we need this study to look at ways in which we can change the design and make it more pedestrian-friendly. I myself as a pedestrian, a biker and motorist, I cross that street, North Gate Boulevard, I cross it, and, you know, it's unsafe. So hopefully this study, we can we can get all these ideas together, make it safe for the pedestrians, make it safe for the bicyclists, and of course, make it safe for the motorists. We have schools located on North Gate. We have multiple businesses that that are that exist on the on the Boulevard. And in the study itself, you know, it's part of Vision Zero, and it should be it should be funded and it should be done. And I'm glad it's at this stage and looks very I'm very excited to start working with the selected firms and get this public outreach out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very thank you very much for the public comment. So let's go through. Let's do comment on items two and six. Maybe if you don't mind, I'll begin on two and then ask Mayor Protem Ashby to make a comment as well. I just note this because four years ago, the city council made a difficult decision to apply for the whole person care program. And we're the only city in the state, other than city and county of San Francisco, to have applied for that program. And it and it required a little bit of risk because we fund the homeless interventions and they then get reimbursed retroactively. And so we're coming to the end now of that process and have invested millions of dollars with our healthcare partners. And as the last play here, we just received a reimbursement of over $4 million for our last payment. And what are we doing with that money? We are putting it into the maintaining and the sustaining, I should say, of five motels, mostly helping women and children, but not exclusively, without FEMA reimbursement, by the way. This is beyond Project Home Key and Room Key. Huge shout out to Danielle Foster and to Bridget Dean. We are going to be able to sustain 342 rooms. And since it's women and some men with children, multiply that by about three, we are going to be able to help 1,000 or more unsheltered homeless people because we applied for whole person care. And then we have gone the next step, of course, and built this incredible team to 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 up our game and with much greater urgency when it comes to when it comes to getting people indoors. And so this is really, really significant. Today, I was out on Stockton Boulevard to look at one of the motels, the the Greens on Stockton. And I got to tell you, I was so inspired. The 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 strength of the women, the beauty of these children, the hope that this is bringing so many people. I know we can bring these interventions to scale as we are going to do when we when we pass this master plan. And we're gonna turn the corner, not cure it, but make it so much better. And and this is just evidence of me, but over $4 million kind of falling out of the sky here because we applied for whole person care. Really proud and really grateful. Thank you. Angelique, Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. Didn't fall out of the sky. You fought for it. And and it is really important. And and I also want to thank you for going out to the Greens today. I know that you've met up with some of our favorite people in Sacramento who are doing this hard work right alongside of us, including Bridget Dean. And I am really grateful that you got to see that firsthand today and see those families. I know I've talked a lot about some of the families that are living there, but it is there's no substitute for just seeing it. And I just wanted to say, and this is really, I would add to your thank you list, S H R A and Michelle Dozier and her team, because they are working hand in hand with Bridget and-
Always, always, of course.
On on getting those families, once they're placed in a spot like the Greens, out of there and into the next next step, and also helping provide wraparound services. But when you when this council, every single one of you, and many of you were extremely vocal, like Councilmember Harris, were really vocal about helping women and children, when you put that RFP out there, what you did was wrap services around those families. So those little girls that the mayor saw today, they get help because of you guys, because you guys put $2 million towards kids, and it's a big deal. So I wanted to point out today, as you vote on this item, colleagues, that this is another win for homeless families in our city, that this allows us to keep going. And our efforts here to get to a functional zero for homeless families, people with children, they're primarily women and children, but there are some men there as well, that this helps us get to that goal. And it's really, really significant. And it helps us get to that goal without touching the housing savings account or the housing trust fund and without touching our general fund. So, big, big victory today. Whole person care is worth it just for this moment right now. So, thanks, Mayor, for allowing me to speak on that item, too.
Of course. Thank you so much. Now, let's go to item six.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I just had some comments on that item as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Geta. Sorry.
No, no, I just, again, also wanted to thank Bridget Dean and also to thank Councilmember Shanir on this because the Greens motel wouldn't be in the condition it is and the ability to be here if it wasn't for that joint effort. And, you know, and I want also, you know, credit a lot of the folks in in and around the neighborhood. Because this is, you know, what I've heard is people saying, we as a community need to not to fear from supporting our our community and those who are unhoused. And the fact that on Stockton Boulevard, frankly, you know, less than a quarter mile from my house here, we're doing that here. And I and I think that the fact that the more we pull the community in, also want to thank the library for helping out the kids that were in there and supporting their efforts. It's that joint effort that I think we're going to find those solutions. But most importantly for on this whole person care, Mr. Mayor, there was criticism at that time about whether the county should, I mean, the city should be applying it because it is not a county entity or whatnot. And the fact that we we moved away from that discussion and said, what can we do? I think that is a big one here. So, great job again, and thanks again for all those involved in that process right here in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Geta. Item six, another another thing to really celebrate in this city that almost didn't happen, Vice Mayor Shanir.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick on item two, too. I just want to give a shout out to the folks who own the Greens and really took a risk in remodeling that. It was horrible, to be honest with you. And they really did, and took a little bit of work to get them over the finish line. And kudos to Allison Jo on my staff, who worked with them quite a bit to help them get over that finish line. Really quickly on item six, I think this is a really good item. Powerhouse is looking really good. I think we have an opportunity here. We're investing a significant amount of money. The council passed the youth development plan, which really talked about the assets and characteristics of of programs that we either fund or run. This is a program that we're helping to fund. So I would just like to add a little bit of direction that the YPC continue to monitor Powerhouse to make sure, and I don't have any doubt that this will happen, but it's a good case test for us, but to monitor Powerhouse and make sure that the programming that's being offered there and the work that they do with schools really meets the criteria that we adopted when we adopted the youth development plan. So, pretty straightforward. And a shout out today to former Councilmember Hanson. I don't know that Powerhouse would be moving forward without all of the work that he did. Two shout outs today, we we raised the LGBT flag this morning. And and that's work that he had certainly put a lot of effort into as well. So with that, I'd like to just add that direction on Powerhouse, if okay.
Very good. I think that's consistent with the overall motion, so it doesn't require that it be voted on separately. Very good point. All right, let us-
Hey, Mayor, I have comments on item six as well.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry. Yep, yep.
Okay, first of all, I just want to say that this is a really great day. I have been privileged to be the appointee from this council to the Powerhouse Center Board for a long time, since it was in my district, which was 10 years ago. And I am really proud of the program and the hard work that Michelle and folks have put in over there. It is impressive, and I am super proud to support this today. The real shout out for the Powerhouse Science Center, by the way, goes to Ray Trethewey, my predecessor. He is the person who really fought hard to get this project started. And then I carried it a little ways, and then Rob Fong carried it a ways, and Steve Hanson, and now Katie Valenzuela. And and it is a project where many hands have made light work. So I'm I'm ever proud of Powerhouse Science Center, and I cannot wait for them to open this October. But, Mayor, I would like to make one, I don't think the motion needs to be amended, but I would like to make one direction to staff. Some time ago, we promised the Powerhouse Science Center that we would give them the proceeds from the billboard that is on site. I have talked to economic development about this many times, and there there's a lot of a lot of versions of the story sort of floating around as to why we don't do that. I would like to ask City Manager Howard Chan specifically to look into that a little bit farther and report back to us as to why we can't give them the proceeds from that billboard. And I'd like the city manager and his team to serve as intermediaries on behalf of the Powerhouse Science Center and talk to Clear Channel to have the Powerhouse Science Center be a permanently a permanent advertiser on that billboard that is directly on their property right outside of the building. I think it also helps bring clarity in our city to what the building actually is. So, those are my two items. They're both just direction. They don't really need to be approved right now, but I would like to ask the city manager to follow up, please, on both.
Okay. Thank you, city manager. We got that? Okay.
Clear. Thank you.
It's gonna be an incredible day when we're able to open that up in October. Cannot wait. Tell the story of all it stops and starts and what it what it means for a city to persevere. It's wonderful. Okay, let's vote then on the consent calendar, items minus items nine and 10. Please, call the rule.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
I can't hear anything. Just say that you oh, yeah, it's there.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shanir?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
So, Mayor, in an abundance of caution, I'm gonna approve everything with the exception of item 14. I'm gonna recuse myself on item 14.
Okay, so let 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 the record reflect that Councilmember Jennings voted yes on its consent calendar, but recused himself on item 14. Very good.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, now let's go to item nine, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment and have a separate vote on this item. The Urban Area Security Initiative is something I've been trying to learn more about, and I appreciate the department and the city manager's office for sending me materials. I will say that it makes me really anxious about the level of surveillance and data collection we're doing on residents without a local ordinance to govern that process to ensure we're not we're protecting privacy and we're honoring due process in our procedures as law enforcement does its work. So I'll be voting no on this item today, and I'll continue to vote no on this. And I'd like to ask staff to consider bringing something to law and legislation, if it's okay with the chair, for us to start talking about what a local privacy and surveillance ordinance could look like in the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any staff comments on on this item, response to Councilmember Valenzuela's concern? You're on mute, City Manager.
Sorry, Mayor. No, I had a conversation with Councilmember Valenzuela. We could bring something before the Law and Legislature Committee to talk about the the privacy issues here. But with regard to the actual grant and the awards, no, nothing more to add.
Okay. Thank you, then. Is there a motion and a second on item nine?
Mayor, I'm happy to move the item.
Okay.
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, then let's call the rule, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Mayor Shanir?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay, that passes 72. Let's go now to item 10. Councilmember Geta, you asked it to be taken off. I know Mayor Protem Ashby also-
Mayor, I asked, yeah, can I let me offer this language, and then I think Councilmember Gera might have a substitute, which would be okay, too. But, Mayor, the bottom line here is that this item, in order to be consistent with the county, we would need to not have an auto renewal on the six-year term. So in our staff, so this is for it, this is this whole program is for the city and the county as we're sort of being compliant with the with moving forward on these new rules for the digestion plants. But there are several companies that are in the process of building new digestion plants, which would allow us to then have a more competitive process in the next go around. So, if Councilmember Gera has something else, that's fine for the council entertained. But if we move forward with this motion, we should modify it to not have auto renewals after six years so that we could still have a competitive market for our constituents. When I first came on this council, Jay and I first, Councilmember Shanir and I first got here, Vice Mayor Shanir and I first got here, one of the big issues was that this council had entered into a not-so-great deal on a transfer station for trash, and it cost the end users a lot of money. And I just want to make sure that we're here now and we don't make the same mistake. So I'd like to move the staff recommendation, but remove the auto renewal on the six-year term and allow for a more competitive process moving out. And and then happy to hear what Councilmember Gera has to contribute as well, Mayor.
Good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Geta.
I actually agree with with the what the intent of that the motion is, is to, and I think we should be aligned with what the county is doing. So, you know, the county went with a five-year contract and then did the option for the the one-year renewal after that. And I think the goal is for us to stay competitive. So I think if we maintain with the same competitiveness of the county, you know, Councilmember Ashby, if you're if you're fine just saying five-year contract with the with the not the auto renewal, but the option to to look at the one-year renewal and just be that way, we have the same competitiveness with the county. That would that would be, I think, address the issue.
Councilmember Gera, did the counties have the same starting starting time?
Let's ask staff that. Maybe is John Febo on? I think maybe we can get some info on that.
Sure. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, hello, Mr. Febo.
John Febo from Recycling Solid Waste. And thank you for the questions. And we did track the county agreement and that request from one of the board members, and we actually even spoke with county staff today. In terms of the options for renewal, county staff addressed the issue administratively and actually is planning to go back to the Board of Supervisors and brief them prior to the fifth year, but they did not change the language in the agreement as to the signature authority. I would also note that the two previous organics agreements approved by the council and currently in effect give the authority to the city manager to exercise the option for renewal. One of those agreements is with Yolo County, goes through 2025. The other goes, the other is with Sacramento County and Recology and goes through 2026. If this agreement required council approval for options for renewal instead of the city manager, it would be different than the other previous two already approved under the program by the city and actually different than the county in terms of how they handled what the board member want. In terms of the length, the county agreements, the largest agreement for the county is a six-year agreement with Recology. It begins this July 1, and it sunsets the same time that this agreement sunsets, which is June 30, 2027. Part of our six-year option, six-year initial term is to align with those other jurisdictions on a regional projects. And so the other agreement they have is a five-year agreement with Yolo, their second largest, but that doesn't start until 2022 July. So that also sunsets at the same time that this agreement sunsets, which is-
Okay.
2027.
Okay. If it's all the same, I still I think Councilmember Gera and I would still like to see it come back. But is six years okay with you, Councilmember Gera, then?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as we come back. I mean, I I am concerned about it being so long, and six years giving effect. So if and but if it's in line, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but if it's in line with the county's same timeframe, then then I'm I'm fine with the six years. If it is not, then I'd rather bring it down to five years so that it's competitive with-
He says it's six years.
We've been tracking it. We've been tracking it closely because we know it's an issue, and it and their sunset is indeed 2027. It aligns it also aligns with Folsom as well, what the city of Folsom agreement.
Okay, we're good. We'll just do the six years, but we do want it to come back to council, not auto renew, because we want the council at that point to have opportunity to do a competitive bid and and draw down.
Okay, so that is-
I'll second the motion.
Staff recommendation was it coming back to the council before the six years, I understand it. All right?
Before, no, Mayor. No auto renewal, Mayor.
Before what?
No auto renewal, comes back to the council instead.
No auto renewal. Right.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Let's call the rule on the motion, please.
Thank you for item 10. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shanir?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Thank you to the two members for really flagging some important detail here, you know, and otherwise necessarily be picked up. So we appreciate it. Okay, let us move now to the public hearings and begin with item 16, which was a continuation from May the 13th, I believe. And let's take this up again tonight. I know Councilmember I don't know that we need another full staff report. Maybe just a brief summary from the staff, and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
Robbie, we can't hear you.
Mr. Zachary, you're you're mute. I'm mute.
Well, I could start, Mayor, if that's-
Okay. Councilmember, I mean, basically, the posture of this is that you asked for time to meet with the developer to address, talk about some concerns that you had. And so why don't you pick it up from there?
Yeah, thank you. And we did meet last week, and I really appreciated their time and gave me a chance to get a better understanding of the design. You know, my real hope was that we could find a way to work together to improve the affordability of some of the units, whether it was by pursuing subsidies or other funding. And unfortunately, developer declined to do that. And I recognize I'm coming in really late in the project development, but it does break my heart because this is a real opportunity site and a real amazing part of town that could really provide some important needed housing for workforce and people who need affordable housing. You know, as I said in the last meeting, I think any zoning or streamlining or public good should come with some clear public benefit. And something that I heard a lot when I was campaigning was that the idea of what a public benefit is didn't really align super well with what the community thought it should be. If you ask any of the leaders in my district, they will tell you affordability, but that's not necessarily the case in another part of the district. You know, in other parts of the district, just finally developing that vacant lot is enough of a benefit to warrant and justify a zoning change. But I do think this is something that I want to look into. But again, recognizing I'm coming in late on this project, I do want to move the item forward. But I want to provide direction to staff to bring to law and legislation and ordinance to require a community benefit in exchange for any public good. And we can work out the detail of what defines community benefit and how that would be decided project by project in the committee process. And so that's why I'm landing and approve the project and provide direction to staff so that in the future, we have some clear guidance to the development teams and to the community as to what to expect.
All right, very good. Appreciate your work. And, you know, you're you're right. You're new to the city council, and you have a you have a very clear and principled policy direction, and it should be taken up as a as a matter of policy for all of us to deliberate and and consider. And for this project, I appreciate that you are moving it to move it forward because they've worked hard and and have worked under the rules that are on the ground here. So I think it's a good result. Thank you. Is there a-
Second by Shanir.
Second by Shanir. Is there a public testimony on this item?
There is. And Councilmember Valenzuela, did you open and close the public hearing?
I did not. Thank you, Mindy. I would like to open and close the public hearing and move approval with direction to staff to bring an ordinance back to law and legislation.
Thank you. And I have three callers on this item. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two- Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, this is Jameson Parker with the Midtown Association. I'm just calling to voice our support for the sixteen R Development Project before you this evening. Now, the Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district representing over 1,200 properties within Midtown. Our mission is to make the Midtown a center of creative, for culture creativity and vibrancy in the urban core. Now, projects like the one before you this evening helped do exactly what we set out to do with our mission by adding density and vibrancy to this block of our street situated at the corner of two important commercial corridors in the central city. This project is in a perfect location surrounded by retail, restaurants, grocery stores, and public transportation. Just as important as the project itself is the effort of the applicant went through to rezone this property. By doing so, the project now is able to bring over 100 units forward instead of what would have been just over 30 in the previous land use. This parcel sat vacant for many years and is important to the vitality and growth of our city that is realized as a much more productive use of the dense mixed-use development. Over the last few years, we've seen an increase in housing production in Midtown, and as of the second quarter of 2020, 2021, there have been over 1,300 units going through the review process or under construction. We also know that this is nowhere near enough housing to meet the demand that we are experiencing. Midtown's taken pride in being supportive of housing projects of all types that have been proposed and approved at the city, and we need to continue to do everything that we can to deliver much-needed housing in Midtown and our city as a whole. This project has been worked on for the last several years and we ask that council approve it for you tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Great, thank you, I hope everybody can hear me. My name is Mike Heller, I am calling on behalf of the Sixteenth and R Benvenuti Project. This is very surreal that I'm calling in and can see you on the TV screen, but I'm not there in person like I usually do over the last 25 years of bringing projects forth to you guys. But I, I felt compelled to comment for this project for a variety of reasons, so I'll be brief. You know, for so many years, we dreamed of having these high-density, mixed-use housing projects in our city, and it's really heartwarming to see that we have many of them coming. And we have a lot of demand coming in, Bay Area people coming in, so this, this really hits the mark of a prototype of the type of dense housing that really benefits the city. Secondly, it, you know, it does have transit-oriented nature to it, being right next to the light rail, and the thoughtful approach to parking, you know, really shows the, you know, the trend that we're on as an evolving, maturing city. For me personally, you know, as Mr. Mayor will attest, I've been, you know, at the Ice Blocks now for eight years of my life, committed to making that project happen, and this is a very strategic piece. It's right across the street from our Block One, from West Elm and Mendocino Farms. They ask me all the time, when is something going to happen on that empty lot? So this is a very important piece to the success and the future of Ice Blocks. It also complements the CADA project that's behind the Ice Blocks at Eighteenth and S, which is an affordable workforce housing project. So there is a nice mix, and this, this one, you know, hits the mark as well, it's a good compliment. Next point is, it really is an important piece to the city of Sacramento, it's a gateway as we drive into the city of Sacramento, we can't miss it, it's right on the right.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
So it's important. And lastly, I will say it fits the vision of our street that we've all been fighting for, for the last 20 years, and we need to no longer have an empty lot.
Thank you for your comments.
No this project, I appreciate all your time.
Thanks for calling in, Mr. Heller, and for all your, your, your vision and good work in Midtown Sacramento.
Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Louis Morante, I am a D4 resident calling in support of the project. I live just around the corner and I walk by this place all the time, as you probably know, it's just a big vacant lot right now, and I'd really love to, love to see it be a positive contribution to that R Street neighborhood down there, I think there's some really cool stuff going on, and I think this is, this has an opportunity to really add to that. I just add that, you know, more housing like this is, is really important for California and for Sacramento as a way of addressing our really acute housing shortage. And so, you know, I typically encourage folks to try to find a pathway, yes on stuff, and definitely am here to encourage your support for this as well. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I hope you'll approve this project tonight.
Thank you, Louis, thank you so much.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Anseln Lundberg, I'm a District Three resident and a co-chair of House Sacramento. We're a local group that fights for ending our region's housing shortage by building more sustainable, affordable, and equitable communities. I just wanted to call and say that House Sacramento supports the rezone required for this project at Sixteenth and R. These new homes will benefit Sacramento by addressing our housing shortage even if only by 100 units. I think we've heard last, two weeks ago at the meeting about the need for the rezone, even though the project is consistent with the city's general plan and the central city specific plan, House Sacramento was involved and supportive of that central city plan back in 2018 when it was developed. We definitely appreciate Councilwoman Valenzuela's concerns about affordability, and we're also interested in participating in a citywide study of these market-based tools like affordability requirements to develop those in a way that doesn't put a damper on housing production but can address the goals that, that we all want to see, such as more affordable housing in Sacramento. So again, recommending approval of the requested rezone, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, I have no more callers, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very, very much. There has been a motion and a second, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protam Ashby.
Yes, and congratulations, Councilmember Valenzuela, good work on your part.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Thank you all very, very much, and thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Item seventeen.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers, I'm Eric Frederick with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual public hearing for the Neighborhood Landscaping District, which is comprised of 34 subdivisions located throughout the city. Annual assessments are levied in this district to finance the maintenance of landscaping improvements located adjacent to and/or along the frontage of these subdivisions. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the budget and levy the assessments for fiscal year 2021, 22. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
I'll move the item. Second?
Moved in second, and please call the roll. Mayor? Oh yes, I'm sorry.
I'll open and close the public hearing.
I've already been, already been done, you can do the next one.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear it with the... Open and close.
Oh, the opening and closing of the public hearing, this, this is a stumbling block for these motions, quite often.
Open and close the public hearing, move the item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shenier.
Mayor Protam Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, all right, thank you, let's move on to item eighteen, and let's get that open and closing the public hearing right this time, okay? Everybody?
Thank you, good evening, my name is Arwin Watt with the Finance Department. The item before you now this evening is the annual public hearing for the Village Garden Landscape Maintenance District, which provides funding for maintenance and repair of masonry walls, landscaping, and irrigation systems for the areas within North Point and the Norwood subdivisions. For this district, the proposed fiscal, fiscal year 21, 22 annual assessment of $123.10 per residential unit per year, which will remain the same as last year's assessment. Staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the assessment for fiscal FY 2021 and 2022 for the Village Garden Maintenance District. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, any public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
Helen Jennings, why don't you make the motion, please?
Be my pleasure, Mayor, I will open and close the public hearing and move item eighteen.
I second.
Moved in seconded, please call the roll.
Mayor Protam Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Thank you, let's move, that passes, let's go to item nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment, I'm really excited about item number eighteen, especially with this minimal increase, now we're going to be expecting this lush green grass and beautiful upgrades within the community, so very excited about this, thank you.
That's great, thank you, item nineteen?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue, this is, this item is to continue to July 20th because of noticing, noticing requirements.
So we're putting it off?
The motion is actually to continue to July 20th, that's the, the item. Madam Clerk, does this require, require opening and closing the public hearing?
It does not, you're, you're passing a motion to continue the item to July 20th.
I'll second.
Mayor Protam Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, all right, let's move to item, that passes, I mean, we'll continue it, of course, let's move to item twenty.
Mr. Mayor, I'll again make a motion to move this item to July 20th as well, for noticing requirements.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, no public testimony, let's call the roll, please.
It's correct, no public testimony, who was the second, please?
I'll, I'll go ahead and second it, I think we missed someone.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that's continued as well, we now get to the discussion calendar item, and we begin here with the auditor's proposed audit plan for the next fiscal year.
Okay, hopefully you guys can see my screen. Right, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, Jorge Seguera, your city auditor. The recommendation that is before you is that you adopt a resolution approving the city auditor's proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2021, 22. I am pleased to present our 2021, 22 proposed audit plan. The Office of the City Auditor conducts performance audits, research, analysis projects, and is responsible for managing the city's whistleblower hotline. To develop the plan, my office uses several tools. We perform a citywide risk assessment, we solicit feedback from the council and management, and we incorporate what we have learned over the years to identify projects that will benefit the city. We present this plan to the Budget and Audit Committee on April 6, 2021. At the committee meeting, members requested that the office add an audit to the proposed audit plan that would evaluate the city's complaint investigation and resolution practices and assess racial disparity. The committee also suggested that we partner with the Office of Public Safety and Accountability. In response to this request, we met with Dr. Watson to develop a project scope. Based on our meeting, we are proposing that the auditor's office and the Office of Public Safety and Accountability partner in assessing the city's complaint investigation and resolution practices. Partnering on this project would allow for our offices to leverage the Office of Public Safety and Accountability's expertise in public safety to evaluate the public safety complaint and investigation process. The city's practices would also be reviewed using a racial disparity lens. We should note, however, that if disparities are identified, the presence of a disparity alone is not evidence of racism, discrimination, or disparate treatment. It may simply highlight potential areas of concern that may require additional in-depth analysis. The proposed plan is broken into three parts. The first part focuses on the work of our Performance Audit Division and contains eight Priority One projects. These projects include audits of homeless services, auditing language accessibility for community engagement, and auditing the Planning Division. The second part focus, focuses on our work of our compliance auditor for the cannabis group. The work includes ongoing development of our continuous monitoring program and performing an audit of the cannabis administrative penalty and appeal process. The third part of the proposal focuses on the work that our Research and Analysis Division does, which includes eight research projects for the division which incorporate our annual work on equity and diversity as well as the annual citywide community survey. Also listed on this work plan are Priority Two audits, which were identified during the audit plan development process, but that we do not currently have resources to complete. I hope this proposed audit plan provides the broad coverage you have come to expect from my office, and I'm available to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Auditor, is there public testimony on the audit plan?
Yes, I have six calls on this item.
Good, let's hear from the public and then we'll turn it over to the City Council, please.
Thank you, may I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims, and I am from District Six, and I'm calling in to support item twenty-one. When it was first brought to my attention that there was an opposition to the plan as proposed by the city auditor, my question was why? A good audit can point out good things happening within an agency or the government or in, or a business, as well as any areas that may need addressing. And as a taxpayer and someone who wishes to make sure that our government officials are being good stewards of all of our resources, when there's an accusation of any type of miscorporation, any type of workplace harassment, or any wrongdoing within my city government, I would like to have that addressed and resolved. And the process should be fair, it should be unbiased, it should not be influenced by any outside influences. And the organization that's being audited for no matter what it may be should encourage and welcome the audit process as a way to determine if everything is on the up and up and to assure that its citizens and employees are being treated fairly. So once again, to conclude, I'd just like to ask if there is, just like to state that if there is any opposition to this plan, my question is why? That's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rashid Chadeek, hello, Mayor and City Council Members. Hello, my name is Rashid Chadeek. Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I am uh calling in today to uh voice my support of this audit and that it is an important audit, and uh there are very important uh attributes that come from an audit. Um, I am very concerned about the lack of diversity with the Sacramento Fire Department and the continued issues and race relations and race equity as it pertains to hiring practices and complaints in the fire department. I think there's over five hundred and fifty firefighters. Only about ten to twelve of them are African American. I think there is a serious issue here, and I am very concerned that there is not a unanimous decision to have an audit of this department. Um, we have to understand that there is a new day, and the same good old boy network will not suffice for us. Uh, I'm hoping that this will be a unanimous decision from the city manager on down to the city council. Um, there are some serious issues here, and I hope to be a part of the solution and that you guys will come along with us in the solution to uh get to the diversity in the Sacramento Fire Department. I think we have been talking about this for a couple of years now. We talked about gender equality and ethnicity in the two thousand seventeen uh audit, uh which I'm not sure if we reached those uh goals as of yet, but I know for sure that um there is an issue in the fire department as we speak. There are young people who have been pushed aside, uh, who have gone.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I just want to say that thank you for this opportunity to speak on this, but please vote in the right direction when it comes to.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi. Um, hello, this is Aubrey Taylor from the City of Sacramento African American Employees Leadership Council, or AAELC, um, and I'm calling to say we are in full support of the audits proposed by the city auditor. Um, the results of these audits will give insight into many of the issues we've raised in the past five years. We're hoping that this work will begin the process of educating and rebuilding trust for city employees in using the internal channels of reporting issues of discrimination. As part of the annual employee survey, we would like to see a racial disparity assessment similar to the report performed performed by the Air Force in December of twenty twenty. The data revealed from this survey or assessment will provide significant insight into the plight and challenges these employees face on a daily basis and provide information to assist the city in developing a comprehensive and effective diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative. Um, as an employee organization, AAELC will continue to advocate for fair and equitable treatment for African American employees by the City of Sacramento, and will work with city leadership to accomplish this mission. Um, and again, thank you to the auditor's office and city council for bringing this issue to light. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Charo Gonzalez. I am a member of the Sacramento County Young Democrats and the Lucky New Young Democrats here in Sacramento. I'm also um a partisan uh council member of Valenzuela City, City area. Um, I was calling to support and uh to establish and handle complaints based on the bias and discrimination that uh address employees' concerns. I feel like this is something that helps address the racial disparity that a lot of employees face. Um, just calling to see that city council helps build trust and retain diverse staff and really look into issues that are happening within the city. I really appreciate your attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Rhonda Rayo-Pravis. I reside in District Seven, and I'm in strong support of item twenty one, the audit of complaint investigation processes and the racial disparity assessments to address complaints of workplace toxic cultures. I also strongly agree with Councilmember Eric Gera's statement that we must ensure that the processes established to handle complaints of bias and discrimination are effective in addressing employees' concerns if we are to build trust and attract diverse talent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Council. This is Steve Bula calling District Six. I would like to see audits of these uh utility user tax, particularly with an eye towards uh climate change, um, and getting an idea what can be done and what how much uh carbon your exemptions have allowed, uh, because you don't tax uh for some entities, uh, the gas used in the city. Um, and also to see, uh, determine if uh uh renewable energy credits for people who have solar on their roof are being uh used to uh burn natural gas at uh by smud, um, to before you allow an tax exemption to the people who have rooftop solar and such. So uh I would appreciate uh an audit and get an idea what has happened over the last twenty years and how much inadvertent use of uh or or direct use of renewable energy credits have been done by smud by telling people that they are getting um solar power and um uh but smud is taking those renewable energy credits for RPS compliance that allows up as as much as uh four times as much uh energy to be produced by natural gas. So again, uh, this would be go dovetail nicely. I've made comments on Title Three. So please get in there and see if you can uh stop the use of natural gas in the city and by through your tax code. Uh, thank you and good evening.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Clerk. We do have a number of members who have hands up. Councilmembers Harris, followed by Vice Mayor Shenier, and Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mayor. Jorge, as usual, I'd like to commend you and the workers in your office for your work product, which has been consistently very high quality over the years. Always appreciate your audits, and I like the shape of this work plan. There's one issue here that I wanted to bring up, which is, you know, we have commissioned a study by EPS to look at all things cannabis. And I noticed in your staff report that you have a request for a new FTE. I think that that would be premature and probably duplicative of effort to hire somebody to do auditing of cannabis, uh, further or deeper auditing of cannabis until our EPS study is complete. So I I am not sure, actually, in reading the report, maybe the city manager can clarify this, but if we move the resolution to adopt the audit plan, uh, does that include right now an FTA, FTE?
No. That that was not my intention. Based on the discussion that we had at Budget and Audit, um, the Budget and Audit Committee members just noticed that there were some Priority Two work that uh we weren't going to be able to get to, and they just suggested that we note in the work plan what that might look like in terms of cost if the council wanted to accelerate some of that work. So we were just simply suggesting that uh during the normal budgetary process that we're currently go through, that be part of what uh is considered. But the adoption of this work plan is purely just the projects. Um, the other piece in in terms of, you know, the FTE and um and the costs associated with that is purely informational. Um, uh, should the council decide to incorporate that into the budgetary discussions, then it could be weighed with the variety of different priorities and considerations that the council is currently considering um as uh the general budget process.
Well, thank you, Jorge. That that definitely clears up my concern. Um, I do think it's wise to hold off on that personally until we get the results of the EPS study. But that being said, again, very appreciative of your work always, and I'd like to move the resolution.
It's been moved. Vice Mayor Shenier?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, let me say I I agree with everything Mr. Harris just said. Uh, the quality of the work coming out of your office, Jorge, appreciate that. It's really important. The the charge really of the auditor is to help us be more effective and efficient in how we do business, correct?
Correct.
Right, which is which is something we all strive for. Um, on the cannabis piece, I do agree that it's a little bit premature on this. Uh, also, and you and I have had this discussion, so nothing new to you. Um, you know, I I don't want to necessarily treat cannabis differently than we treat all the other departments. And uh I I really found the risk analysis that you do fascinating. Um, I I think it was it's an interesting thing. I I'm hoping that you, because my understanding, and we had a little technical problem when we were talking to you, we lost you, and I still have Lynn for a while. But um you have you have a different scale for cannabis than you do for all the other departments. Is that correct?
That's correct, because when the council decided to um uh request that we establish a dedicated position to review cannabis, we, in essence, assume that cannabis is always an area for us to evaluate for opportunities for improvement and to continuously monitor so that we can keep the council informed as to what opportunities for improvement uh we identify through that uh continuous monitoring process and and our audit work.
Right, and and we have, as a result of that, we do have a full-time auditor just on.
That's correct.
And that's that's unique in the city to have someone on one department like that.
No, we also have, we also have that uh for the Utilities Department. We have a position that's dedicated to just auditing the Utilities Department.
Okay, so those are the two that have a great.
That's correct.
Um, and do you normally, when, and and I I guess the question I have is on the other piece, the solid waste piece, is that the same as cannabis, that that was a suggestion and not a request?
Uh, correct. When we've had this conversation in the past, uh, and it also came up during the Management Partners uh exercise, that this is an area uh that I think uh has some potential for streamlining and improvements. And in discussing uh some of these opportunities in the past, it made sense that uh perhaps a contract uh project would make sense in this particular area. But just given, uh, for example, in this last year, COVID, we ended up actually postponing doing that review last year, and this is really a carryover of that um same thought that we had discussed before. Um, obviously, we can continue to postpone it uh if if that is not an uh area of priority for the council. But um uh when we had discussed it before, since it is an enterprise fund, we thought that it would be appropriate that uh the enterprise uh basically provide the funding if we were to pursue that contract audit um so that we could have that accomplished.
Okay, I'll I'll leave that to my colleagues to see. So, but I think it's um, well, let me let me just ask, do you normally, or is it a standard practice that you would have a conversation with a department or division or program before you you recommend an audit?
Uh, not necessarily, no.
Understand the process a little better.
Yeah, I mean, we we inquire with all of management. We send out a solicitation for feedback for potential areas uh to audit and to consider. Um, and so those kind of conversations might occur uh through that process. Uh, like I mentioned before, in particular with uh solid waste, um, this has been an area that has come up on multiple occasions, and we've actually been carrying it on our audit plan for some time. But for various reasons, we haven't been able to get to it.
All right. Well, just just to to finish the cannabis piece, my my request would be that in addition to the separate scale that you have, you also do the risk analysis that slides them into the overall city departments.
Sure.
Especially when we're talking about general fund, we need the data to be able to make a decision between where we put a hundred and twenty thousand. And so looking at the risk analysis of cannabis versus everything else would be helpful. Let me ask, I have two other questions on the on the plan itself, and I know you guys are stretched and we're continually adding audits to your list. Um, so I have two questions. One is on the travel audit.
Um.
Wh-what was the risk analysis on that? And the reason I'm asking is twofold. One is, my understanding is that we have, or the city has put together a new travel plan for how people do it, uh, coupled with the fact that nobody's traveled for the last, I'm assuming, twelve to fifteen months, and probably not into the foreseeable future. So that's one thing. And and then the second um is around the homeless piece, where we had a lot of work that we've done uh when when Emily was there. Um, we've kind of changed gears quite a bit uh with the Department of Community Response, and that is, what, six to seven months in the making here? So on travel, is it worth doing now versus, especially if we have a new program getting started on how we do that? Um, I don't really care what happened two years ago at this point, because it's not going to happen again, because we have a change. And then on on the homeless piece, um, is it worth waiting uh till next year when we we have some real grounding in the department, not just six to eight employees or whatever we have at this point? So those would be my two questions on that one. I just want to make sure that with scarce resources that you have in your department, we're doing what is really the priority of the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And and let me start with the homeless piece. Um, if you notice, one of the requests that the Budget and Audit Committee had made was that we add dates to the anticipated start time of these projects. And with homeless services, our anticipated start time for that is June of uh twenty twenty two. So you're you're looking at a start almost a year from now as it is already um based on what we're anticipating. And so I think that still does give the program some time to really uh get its foundation and um be able to begin to demonstrate, you know, the things that they've been tasked with doing so that we can then evaluate whether or not um uh the program is meeting its objectives. And so I I think we've built in enough time, um, and if need be, when we get to a situation where we're about to start a project, I usually have a conversation with Howard if there is some unforeseen circumstances that might not make it an ideal time to to begin a project, to have that conversation, see if maybe a a further delay might be warranted. And I am uh definitely uh available to have that conversation when when that time comes. In regard in regards to employee.
And let me just ask, so that that's not budgeted, then, right? Within your budget to do it until that timeframe for the homeless piece?
In in terms of when I would have our resources move towards doing that? Yeah, that's when we're we're anticipating.
Okay.
At the end of this next fiscal year.
Okay, and then on the travel?
And then on travel, that comes up because one of the variables that we have uh in our risk matrix that we kind of uh did a crash course through uh is whistleblower tips. And we've uh seen a number of whistleblower tips that have come through in regards to employee travel. So our thinking was that we might be in an ideal situation right now to evaluate the controls that are in place and do a quick assessment of uh travel so that if and when we return to traveling, we've improved our systems and our uh controls so that some of the things that uh we've become aware of through whistleblower tips uh are prevented from occurring in the future. And so that was that was the the thought is to uh be almost preemptive on that.
So I I guess what I would request on that one then is that you you meet with um whoever is working on travel, and maybe it's uh the Assistant City Manager, Milstein, um, and just see what they're doing on the, I I don't know if you've seen the the revised travel plan?
I believe, yeah. And and if I'm not mistaken, I believe they're making some technology improvements as well, which might address some of the things that, you know, we had seen in the past. But that, I think, uh, also gives us a perfect opportunity to test and 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 confirm whether or not um those improvements achieve their desired outcome.
All right, well, just again, scarce resources and priorities. And for me, you know, on the travel piece, I don't know that anyone's going to be, anyone's going to be traveling through the end of this year, so. So it may be something that we put off. I would just ask that you meet with City Manager and the Assistant City Manager on that. So with, I'm happy to move the resolution, or second the resolution rather, behind Mr. Harris.
Okay, I've got Councilmember Gedda and Councilmember Vang.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll continue on that conversation with Councilmember Chenier. You know, I, I would also kind of agree on the, if we're going to be thinking about where scarce resources are, both on travel or on homelessness, I also know, I would rather, I would rather see what, what, how far can we move that? And then do something on the priority two on the cannabis audit related to illegal cannabis cultivation. We've done some significant, significant progress, you know, really going after some of the illegal growhouses and folks who, who, you know, particularly in a lot of our, you know, under resources neighborhoods were, were taking advantage of and gutting homes out completely. So I think there's a lot that we can learn from that aspect and figuring that out. So if there is a, in your conversations about managing, you know, resources, I'd rather us pick up that one on priority two and see where we learned from those efforts. I know we've made a huge dent in a lot of the areas where we both, I know in District Six, Eight and Two, there, we made some great progress on that. And learning what was the most effective tools, I think, would be helpful. So if we're talking about managing those resources, I know you've already got one auditor just doing cannabis, but if we can have that one pop in, that would be helpful. Second, I would also, you know, given the fact, I mean, at least for District Six, we have, we have the code enforcement piece, the monthly BOT, I think, in the permitting process, those continuous improvements really help in that area. We have a lot of the, the, the feedback loop that we need as businesses are opening up and how to best improve that process. So good work on, on those audits. I'm glad you're, we're moving forward on some of those. And on the education piece here, you know, I do want to thank, you know, you know, Mr. Auditor for highlighting the, making sure that we start using those youth outreach dollars and allocating funds and resources to youth programs. And I know we've got an upcoming stakeholder meeting with a lot of our pediatric and our school advocates on how best to use those outreach education dollars. So I think that's a, that's a good progress moving forward. My final note here, you know, is Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Auditor, is thank you for working with Dr. Watson on this complaint investigation and resolution process. We, you know, as I heard from many of the callers here, many of our employees as well, who want to ensure that they have a reporting process when they feel that there's been, you know, workplace discrimination and, and any kind of, you know, harassment that has racial undertones or, or, you know, some, or even, you know, gender undertones, that we have a process that people feel in this city that they're comfortable moving forward with. So I think this is, again, to the point that Councilmember Vice Mayor Chenier brought up, this is for us to do process improvement. How can we better provide that? And I think the audit will help give and instill that level of confidence and trust in our public employees by making sure that everything we can, having the appropriate whistleblower numbers, that understanding that these are areas that, that need to be improved or that are well, but we haven't done a good enough outreach about discussing how that, how those processes is going to help us. And finally, you know, thank you, you know, City Auditor, also Gedda and Dr. Watson, for looking at these practices and assessing them using a racial disparity lens on it, because we, we need to begin moving forward in that aspect. With that all, the motion's already been moved and seconded, but glad to support it. And again, on, if we're looking at using dollars, I'd support some of the comments that Councilmember Vice Mayor Chenier mentioned.
Thank you, Councilman Gedda. Let's hear from Councilmember Vang here.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I will keep my comments short. I just have two things. First, Jorge, I want to say thank you for your hard work and the quality of your work from your team as well. Really just want to take this moment to thank you for adding the language accessibility for community engagement, which is what, which is what I requested, and I really appreciate you doing that. I, I know that during this council for the past five months, I have mentioned several times regarding making sure that we have language access, you know, at various community events, but even here now during our city council meetings. And so I really appreciate you adding that to the audit and really looking forward to seeing the findings that is going to come from that. I also just want to state, you know, at the moment, the city of Sacramento doesn't have a language access policy, and there are state and federal law that really requires the city to take quote unquote reasonable steps to provide access to limited English proficient individuals. And I'm not sure as a city that we've taken those reasonable steps. And I do know that both the state and the federal provide some flexibility at the local level. And I know that we may be in compliance in terms of checking boxes off, but we may not be compliant in making sure that we actually take reasonable steps depending on our population. And so in addition to the audit, because I don't think that it needs to be done separate, really looking forward to your findings and the team of your work. But I also like to, you know, provide direction to the city manager as well on this item to work with my office CBOs and advocates to actually develop a language access policy for the city of Sacramento. Other city has it as well, where they have, they analyze, you know, how many individuals in their city speaks a specific language, making sure that there's certain threshold, and I want to make sure that we move forward as a city to ensure that we have a language access policy. And so in addition to this, Jorge, I really appreciate this being added to the audit, because I do think it's going to be in alignment with this work, but want to make a direction to the city manager to work with my office CBOs to create a language access policy locally here that adheres to our, our population.
Oh, Councilmember Vang, I just want to, you and I've talked a little bit about this, and we are in the process of pulling together all the resources we have in this regard for a policy. In fact, I think we've let out an RFP. Amy Williams is on the call. We've already let out a RFP to begin that process, so we will work closely with you. There may be some budget implications as we go through the, the budget process as well. So happy to work with your team on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Another question I had, I was just looking through the audit on the diversity audit piece. Jorge, I just had a question. Is the focus mainly on just employment boards and commissions? I'm curious if this will apply to procurement of process in the city of Sacramento?
So we do quite a bit of work in regards to diversity. And we are planning on looking at the commissions and boards as one of our diversity projects. But we also will be doing city employee review. And in fact, we have a report coming to council in June regarding employee applications and hires and separations that we're analyzing. And so we are tackling diversity from a variety of different perspectives. But to your question, boards and committees, we do that about every two years, and this would be the next cycle to, to do that assessment again. We have that, we have done that once in the past. So this would allow us to perhaps even do some comparisons to see if there's been any kind of shift between when we first looked at them and what our boards and commissions compositions look like now.
Okay, thanks, Jorge. Yeah, no, I was just looking at that, and I think it does just apply. The audit just applies to employment applications, our employees and boards and commission. I was just curious about procurement, and that might be a separate issue, because I did learn earlier this year in February that the city doesn't have any adopted procurement policy or processes related to diversity and gender equity. And so just wanted to put that on record. Maybe this is something that the council needs to review, because procurement is very important in the city. And I recently learned in February that actually the city doesn't have any adopted procurement policies or processes. We do have three kind of big policy areas, policy ordinance that actually tries to address something like this, like ban the box, the equal benefits ordinance and a local business enterprise, but we don't have anything really related to procurement process. And so that's something, I don't know if we have, if you have the capacity to look into that. But if not this round, I just want to make a direction to City Manager to, to look into this, because I do think we also have to look at our procurement process as well as it relates to, as it relates to diversity and gender equity, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, my last comment. I think the auditor, you, you and your team do a very important, comprehensive and effective job. I do associate myself with Councilmember Vice Mayor Chenier's comments. I think thinking through those priorities a second time is important. The only thing I want to add on the homeless audit, I appreciate that it's not till 2022. I, I think that this should come back for some council discussion around the scoping of that particular audit, because we are going to have a lot going on the ground here. And we don't know exactly what that will look like. And so we want to take advantage of the audit opportunity by being as strategic and specific as possible as we see how this evolves. So let's make sure that that comes back for another discussion after, you know, as sometimes say, the beginning of, of 2022.
Sure. And as part of our normal process, I would just mention that we always, before initiating an audit project, solicit additional feedback from the mayor and council so that we can incorporate, you know, the most up-to-date perspective from the elected officials regarding what might be areas of interest or concern that we would want to take into consideration in scoping out a project.
Yep, okay. Very good, everybody. There's a motion and a second. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Thanks, very good work, Jorge. Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gedda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, okay, thank you. Great discussion. So members, I have some good news for you. Recognizing that the next important item is probably going to take several hours, I anticipate. We have over 30 people signed up to call. I have been texting back and forth with Megan Van Bortes, our Creative Economy Lead, as well as my team. I'd like to propose that we put off the status report on the Creative Edge Cultural Plan till, I think, next week. I think we have a fairly light agenda next week. And then the electrification ordinance will be our last item for the, for the day and night. So I bet there's no objection to that. It's my guess. Okay. Very good. And then do we need a motion, Madam Clerk, to continue item 23?
No, you can reorder the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so it, it's going to be put off by executive fiat. There we go, all right. All right, let's move to the, the next item, a very important item of the electrification ordinance. Here's the way I'd like to do this. I, I'm going to give the floor to our city's climate lead, Jennifer Venema. She is going to make a comprehensive presentation. I am then going to suggest several amendments to the proposed ordinance without a lot of editorial comment. We then turn it over to the public for their testimony, and then we'll turn it back to the city council. I will use my, my privileges to chair to go first to kind of frame the argument. And then everybody will, will have, I'm sure, the entire council weigh in and take, take votes as, as raised and as appropriate. Okay? Very good. Jennifer Venema, so glad you're a member and a leader on the city team here. So take it away.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jennifer Venema, your interim climate action lead. And pleased to be here tonight with our project team led by Matt Hurdle and Helen Self in the Community Development Department. The recommended action before you tonight is two parts. Firstly, to adopt an ordinance that would require buildings, new buildings, to be all electric. Secondly, to adopt a resolution outlining the commitment to continued work and planning on important related efforts. To briefly recap, we're back before council as you've directed us to be. City council first passed a motion calling for this ordinance in August of 2020, building on the climate emergency declaration that council established in December of 2019. This work was initiated by the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, which started in late 2018 and prioritized building electrification as a top strategy. Five city committee meetings have occurred on this item shaping the ordinance before you today. But also importantly, engagement has occurred throughout the entire process. Not only are we learning from the 44 cities that have already passed electrification ordinances like this, but we're learning from our local stakeholders to ensure that we get this right. We've worked closely with PGME and SMUD, but we've also engaged hundreds of individuals and key industry groups. Attachment seven of the staff report summarizes our outreach. Since the fall, we've hosted an eight-part discussion webinar series, plus we've had over 50 meetings and discussions with the diverse groups of local stakeholders. We've listened to that input. The input is reflected in the phase, timing and components that I'll briefly summarize. Effective in 2023, the ordinance would require that all new buildings up to three stories be all electric. In 2026, this requirement would then extend to all new construction, even those new buildings that are four stories and above. We are doing this because it's the top thing we can implement as a city to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Energy use in the built environment represents 38% of our inventory, and it's a key sector that we directly regulate. Also, sending a clear signal to the development community now is necessary to direct planning and investment decisions for builders, which often requires significant lead time. Plus, this is about public health. Gas pollutes the air and exacerbates risk for respiratory disease. Sacramento is amongst the worst air quality in the nation, and getting gas out of our buildings is also safer and reduces fire risk. Lastly, electric buildings are generally cheaper to construct with ongoing savings on utility bills. And we've accessed the best electrification incentive in the nation, through SMUD. Now, we also stand to benefit from SMUD's commitment to zero carbon power by 2030. As a reminder, electricity can be generated by a variety of technologies, both on and off-site, without producing emissions. And then rather than gas, electricity is powering the appliances in the building, like clothes dryers or heating systems. Now, quickly, our ordinance has benefited, again, from the learning of the 44 cities that have gone before us. But to quickly summarize how this ordinance will work, once effective, the ordinance only applies to new buildings, with applicability not beginning until January 1, 2023 for low-rise buildings. But if there's an existing building, such as a restaurant, that's replacing equipment or expanding an existing building footprint, that existing building is not subject to the ordinance. And moving towards the right of this figure on the bottom, based on the direction of the Law and Legislation Committee, pathways are available to allow for gas equipment or appliances even in some new building scenarios. This can happen either through limited exemptions or through an infeasibility waiver process, both established in the ordinance. The limited exemptions reflect the challenges we've heard, where all-electric equipment may pose technical or cost difficulties. These exemptions are available until December 31, 2025. No extra application or process will be required. On May 28, supplemental material posted with an addition requested by the mayor to further clarify that phasing out of the exemptions will be based on the state of the technology at the time. These edits change the ordinance included in the staff report to indicate that exemptions may be extended by a future city council if technology is not feasible and available by July 1, 2025. To respond to stakeholder input, the ordinance commits to establish infeasibility guidelines that will be adopted by council before the ordinance goes into effect. As directed by the Law and Legislation Committee, we've provided additional detail on the process in attachment four. To develop guidelines, we will convene a technical panel and work with stakeholders. The role of the panel will be to help us prepare the guidelines that will form the basis of future decisions on infeasibility waivers. Unlike exemptions, the waivers do not have a sunset date. Then we'll review the guidelines on an annual basis with this technical panel. We will work with a range of stakeholders as shown on the screen, including operators, businesses, developers, restaurants, technical experts and representatives from equity and environmental justice communities. Attachment four also indicates our schedule for this process. We will finalize who's on the panel this summer, and we welcome your further input on the categories of stakeholders we've proposed. We will work over the next year and a half with this group to develop guidelines and bring them. and bring them to council for approval prior to the effective date of the ordinance, as currently stated in the ordinance. Then the guidelines will become the basis of decisions by the building official in terms of granting infeasibility waiver after this engagement, providing predictability and a clear process. The resolution in Attachment 6 commits to report back on related issues that we've heard about from stakeholders, which were also prioritized by the Law and Legislation Committee. We are convening partners and collaborating on green job strategies and opportunities. Secondly, staff are also starting an evaluation of onsite water reuse standards. For both of these efforts, we will report back to council. And next, we are pivoting to develop a long-term strategy for how to transition gas out of existing buildings using a phased approach, learning from what other cities have done and where they've had challenges. The outcome for the existing building work will be a strategy that staff brings to council late next year with a number of recommendations, which we then work on with our partners to implement over the coming years. The process will involve technical analysis and engagement, working with the Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee, the business community, and more. The resolution reflects the addition of the business community since this item passed for publication on May 18. So to conclude, today's action is one of many touchpoints and opportunities for input on components of the ordinance and related work, with opportunities for ongoing council input and direction. Again, we'll be following 44 cities that have gone ahead of us and learning from their lessons. Today's action is a key step to advance an ordinance that reflects the wide range of input we've received, but with many opportunities for ongoing engagement and direction before the ordinance goes into effect in 2023. Thank you. With that, we are here for your questions, along with our Fire Marshal, Jason Lee, and staff from SMUD and PG&E.
Okay. Thank you very much for thorough presentation. I want to add just a couple of amendments to requested resolution, as I said, and then we'll turn it over to public testimony. The, the limited exemption, which we worked out with a, a number of representatives of the business community to say, and as you described, Ms. Venema, that if the technology is not feasible and available by July 1, 2025, the city council may consider extending the limited exemption until technology is feasible and available. In my last meeting that included the Chamber of Commerce, they requested that we change the term "may" to "shall." And I initially said, I didn't think that that was necessary. But upon thinking about it, I have no issue with ma, changing the "may" to "shall", that the city council shall extend the exemption if, in fact, the technology is not feasible and available. And I would like to change that. I would like to, again, for purposes of emotion, amend to replace the word "may" with "shall." Secondly, the manufacturers and others have wanted more specificity around the waiver determination process. In other words, there is going to be a process to determine how it is, how it is we go about determining whether or not there should be an exemption, again, based upon the feasibility and availability of the technology. And so, consistent with what I have heard, the manufacturers have asked for, I would like to add language that, that after the building official developing guidelines to consider infeasibility, I want to say that the guidelines, quote, "must be developed in consultation with relevant industry experts and practitioners, including the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District." I want to also say that, that the role of the feasibility committee should be to determine, to, to put forward a process for determining timely decisions and to define clearly any appeal process. These are issues that the manufacturers have raised, and I would like to make sure that the language in the ordinance reflects the changes that I have just described. Okay. We can, we can clarify that, of course, when, when we come back for an actual motion and action. But I just wanted to get that on the record, because it also may affect some of the, the public testimony, the point of view of some of the stakeholders who, who we are about to hear from. All right? Madam Clerk, let's start the public testimony, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Jaime Lemos, and I'm a senior manager with the SAC Metro Air District. We strongly support the proposed ordinance because of its many air quality and public health benefits. The city of Sacramento plays a lead role in implementing the commitments of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. The commission identified the built environment as a priority sector for carbon reductions. In addition, there is a growing evidence pointing to increasing concerns regarding indoor air pollution associated with natural gas combustion in appliances. Americans spend 90% of their time indoors, and most people don't realize that activities such as cooking with gas stoves create indoor air pollution that can cause respiratory and other health problems, especially in children. In fact, using a gas stove and oven for just one hour can lead to indoor air pollution that is greater than the California standards for outdoor air. The problem is worse for low-income residents who typically live in smaller spaces with poor ventilation and airflow and inadequate rangehoods. Burning natural gas in buildings produces carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, nitrogen oxide, and fine particulate matter, which can contribute to numerous health conditions and also contribute to outdoor air pollution. As other sources of air pollution, like the transportation and power sector, get cleaner, this sector must also get cleaner. Buildings with all-electric appliances eliminate the problems of gas combustion, and they provide other benefits. Less risk of fire indoors, so they are safer. Less risk of fire outdoors from the storage and transportation of natural gas, and fewer greenhouse gas emissions. The Air District plays a lead role in implementing the recommendations of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, and this ordinance would advance our goals of protecting public health and the environment through clean air and a low-carbon future. We urge the council to approve the proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. My name is Adrielle Quarrel. I am the Policy Director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Sacramento Housing Alliance supports the city's new building electrification ordinance, and we would like to thank the city's staff for engaging our affordable housing developers. As the electrification ordinance was drafted, this really allowed for an exemption that was right on point for regulated affordable housing when virtual net metering is not available. Virtual net metering allows owners serving multiple tenants in a building to install a single solar system to cover the electricity load of both common areas and individual tenant units connected at the same service delivery point. The electricity that is fed back to the grid is in proportion to the tenant's bill, allowing tenants to receive the direct benefit of the building's renewable energy system. The Sacramento Housing Alliance nonprofit affordable housing developers have led on sustainable building practices and support the city's all-electric proposal. Without virtual net energy metering, mandating electric heat pump water heating systems would significantly increase the cost of constructing affordable multifamily housing. Virtual net energy metering will ensure affordable housing developers can more effectively compete for state and federal funding opportunities as cost containment has become highly incentivized. We look forward to partnering with the city to become carbon neutral by 2045. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Jonathan Modrow, and I live, raise my children, and work in District 4. Let me start by saying that the efforts towards zero, zero carbon are existentially necessary. It's my deeply held belief that for the betterment of all people, rich or across all races, nationalities, increase, we must work together to stop global warming. Unfortunately, the only positive aspect of the electric electrification ordinance is the spirit for which it was conceived. While many machines, conveyances, and appliances would benefit from moving from possible dependency to rely on an electrical energy source, there are too many clear issues with its adoption and execution of the change to electric ignore. I know the councilmembers and mayor of Sacramento are being aggressive and innovative, but this ordinance falls short of that potential. We can and must do better. Only 4% and 7% of CO2 emissions currently come from commercial and residential buildings, respectively, according to the California Air Resources Board. This ordinance will affect none of the current CO2 generation and only a fraction of new construction. Further, the very reasonable acceptance that the total electrification is not possible is met with exemptions that then expire, putting the onus on small business owners to deal with adjusting to new and adequate equipment. Legacy tenants faced with gas hookups will become more expensive for all, especially those that cannot adapt. Once the ordinance covers all new construction and legacy buildings are being retrofitted, the ordinance will ultimately outlaw new restaurants, as we know them today, and coffee roasters, especially those representing cultures within our API communities, because what cooking needs fire, and there is no substitute. This ordinance will disincentivize maintenance of existing natural gas lines and any expansion of that grid. It will harm an already overburdened power grid. Instead, we should be looking at alternative fuels such as hydrogen that can affect the carbon footprint of every address in Sacramento at once, not just a few settlements. It can be blended with natural gas as supply generation is being built up and used the same distribution system. In the UK and Australia, there's expectation that the hydrogen, that hydrogen generation can get down to the cost of natural gas and beyond by 2030. This ordinance will barely change carbon output at all, while harming marginalized community members, our restaurant industry.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you. And our chances to add resiliency to our energy system. I urge the no vote.
Thank you for your comments.
Must do better.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes. Mayor and City Council, good evening. My name is Derek Lim. Yes, the Derek that served the city for 24 years in neighborhoods across the city before retiring. And yes, the same person still engage in community even longer. I, I appreciate your, your comments, Mayor, and also appreciate that there's recognition of unintended consequences of the proposed ordinance, particularly in light of there is no current electric alternative that, that is comparable to what gas does. And it, it really speaks to the core and impact of a, a lot of the small businesses in commercial corridors, businesses, improvement districts, chambers of commerce, et cetera. So I, I would really strongly urge the council to consider, rather than looking at extending a deadline for the infeasibility exemptions, that there be no timeline until, until the market matures. And in fact, there is market design and technology that is comparable to the effects of, of gas, where it's effective, it's feasible, and, and it's economical. So I, I, again, I would urge the council to consider that. Adding a layer of, even though it's, shall consider extending the, the exemptions, it's another layer of bureaucracy. I think it would be simpler and more understandable to small businesses to wait until the time is right.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
And then the council can, uh, discontinue the exemptions.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Tim Murphy, and I'm the CEO of the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange, the region's oldest and largest commercial construction trade association. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of SRBX's more than 900 member companies. I wish to first express that SRBX applauds the city's efforts to work towards carbon neutrality. We also appreciate and support the mayor's language amendment to change the ordinance language from "shall" to "may", as it ensures the intent of today's council decision is carried forward as turnover occurs with the council and staff in the future. While the suggested amendment on the makeup of the technical panel is a step in the right direction, SRBX believes that the panel now and for future decarbonization discussion must be comprised of technical experts who are industry practitioners from the construction, manufacturing, engineering, restaurant, and housing industries, and not those who solely consult. Last, I would like to say that the city must define the process, timing, and criteria for feasibility waivers before adopting the ordinance, even if it requires going back to the table and bringing it back to council at a later date. If not amended, we fear this ordinance will have the opposite of effect by increasing vehicle miles traveled and air pollution by driving development and housing outside of the city. Requiring electrification ahead of California's decarbonization timetable may result in development moving out of Sacramento due to lower costs and less regulation. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, City Manager Michael Alt calling on behalf of Downtown Partnership, calling to express concerns regarding the feasibility process for the new construction of the electrification ordinance. We really feel the ordinance has the potential to stall new construction within the central city. The ordinance will directly impact and raise the cost of producing housing. This will impact housing production at all levels, we feel, especially the affordable and workforce housing. With limited analysis really completed to understand the feasibility of new electrical mandates, we just don't think that there's enough information to demonstrate the proposed changes are cost-effective. We do appreciate the emphasis on establishing a formal feasibility waiver process. I do know there was some discussion tonight on some potential changes and modifications. However, that process has to be clear and has the potential really to create lengthy and onerous delays for new projects. We need a clear and flexible off-ramps if technology is unavailable or infeasible. And do ask that the direction be provided to work with stakeholders and industry professionals to develop a technical panel that includes representations from those tasked with adopting the ordinance, including developers and restaurateurs. We feel a failure to understand the unintended, unintended economical hardship with infeasibility for our businesses could have negative consequences, especially for our local businesses and minority-owned businesses. We want to be part of this process. We want to work with you, but we also must ensure that additional requirements on new and existing buildings do not have unintended consequences that could further exacerbate, which we already know is a housing shortage. We look forward to working with you and ask that you keep this in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and honorable councilmembers. My name is Todd Sciavo, and I'm the Business Manager of UA Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Bitters. I am calling in tonight to state our support of the city's electrification ordinance. Local 447 is encouraged that the city has included us in the discussions, and together, we are committed to looking at ways to include water reuse, water conservation, and water recapture technologies into future building requirements. This is especially important at a time when California has been so plagued with drought and water has become such a precious commodity. Local 447 is poised to help lead this water conservation component and ensuring that there is a just transition for our members as Sacramento makes the move away from natural gas installations in new buildings. Local 447 is looking forward to informing this discussion as part of the workforce development team. Respectfully submitted, Todd Sciavo, and I represent members in every district in Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. You have two minutes to address the council. Caller, welcome to the meeting. It's your turn to address the council. Caller, please turn down the device that you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow city council members. My name is Edward Premising, and I'm also a member of the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange. I'm also one of the individuals that helped run one of the largest employers here in the Sacramento area, which happens to be a building materials manufacturing company. I think a lot of what was already discussed about the concerns of various negative impacts based on the proposed ordinance is a very valid concern, not only for businesses, but it should be a valid concern for every one of the members of the council. I think, you know, in light of COVID and all the people and the businesses that are remaining closed, especially restaurants, you know, adding a layer of complexity on new buildings will just drag that rebound, so to speak, of some of these that are individuals of our community that are most vulnerable, especially in the restaurant sector. And one of the previous callers also mentioned the ancillary businesses and building, including housing. It's all going to be impacted, and I think it may just be best to take a moment and try to define this in a clearer perspective as opposed to rushing this along. We're all in it to find carbon neutrality at some point. I just, I'm concerned from a business perspective and a concerned citizen that it is just being rushed, and those most vulnerable will be impacted. And I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and council members. This is Brian Schob. I am a resident of District Four and served on the Community Health and Resilience Technical Advisory Committee of the Mayor's Climate Commission. Like one out of 10 kids in Sacramento, I grew up with asthma. For those of you who haven't experienced a severe asthma attack, I want you to imagine trying to breathe through a straw with someone sitting on your chest. It's a traumatic experience for both kids and their parents. In Sacramento, over 3,000 children take a trip to the emergency room every year because of asthma attacks. One of the many reasons I support the ordinance before you tonight is that eliminating gas cooking in homes significantly reduces the risk of asthma in children and the severity of asthma symptoms for kids who already have it. According to a meta-analysis published in the International Journal of Epidemiology in 2013, children living in a home with gas cooking have a 42% increased chance of having asthma. You can do something about that tonight by passing the ordinance and ensuring that future buildings no longer harm kids' lungs. Of course, to reduce the risk of fossil fuel-induced asthma for all of Sacramento's kids, we need to electrify all buildings, not just the new ones, which is why I'm also asking you tonight to commit to acting as quickly as possible on an existing building electrification strategy that prioritizes low-income households. And finally, before this ordinance takes effect in 2023, I entreat you to enact a just transition plan for our city's plumbers and pipe bitters. They are important members of our community with valuable skills that can be put to good use, and it's only the fair thing to do. Ultimately, we will move faster and farther on this climate crisis when we move together and ensure no one is left behind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Good evening, caller. Please turn down the device that you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Wilder Sizer, and I'm a resident of District Four. We have the glorious option to build pollution-free buildings that are healthier and more affordable, and we should high-key seize this moment. A study from Harvard University on Wednesday found that burning fracked gas in homes is now the leading cause of premature death in 19 states, and California ranked number four. The Harvard study also points out that outdoor air pollution from burning gas in buildings cost California $2.3 billion in 2017 alone. California is still expanding the gas system more quickly than any other state in the nation. Even as the UN this week highlights that the expansion is incompatible with a habitable planet, California is at risk of being a major barrier to national emissions reduction goals. It would be unsacramento of us to let this opportunity pass by. Sacramento's proposed building electrification ordinance recognizes the urgent public health and environmental crisis that we face from the continued burning of fossil fuels. If we want a future that is climate safe and supplies clean air for us to breathe, then we must take immediate action now to get fossil fuels out of our building plans and to stop all expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure. Sacramento can join a rapidly growing movement of 70 cities taking these actions toward a just transition. Sacramento has powerful examples to follow, including San Francisco, which adopted an electrification ordinance. It is now exploring options for requiring retrofits through an expanded ordinance. Your constituents are counting on you to seize this beautiful opportunity to cut emissions and vote yes on building electrification tonight. Thank you for taking this into consideration, council. This concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's your turn to proceed. Please address the council.
I'm sorry. Got my volume cranked up as much as I can.
Please turn down the device, the audio on the device you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council.
Sorry. I'm adjusting my hearing aid now so I could hopefully.
Caller, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. This is Alex Eng. I'm a resident of District Seven, and I'm president of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento. The late community leader Frank Fett founded CACS to be the voice of the Chinese-American community. While CACS supports the Sacramento City Council in its efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, there are concerns regarding the ramifications of the electrification ordinance as proposed. One question is, has a comprehensive economic and cultural study been done? If so, which ethnic businesses were represented in? Were protocols observed for Brown Act regarding public hearings? You must know that many traditions and customs include certain foods. The preparation is critical. Chief Chef David Su who gives examples of some of the centuries-old methodology. Is it reasonable to assume a technology can be developed by 2026? While we applaud SMUD's partnership in this endeavor, we do not know if its research and development staff can find the answers in time. Therefore, CACS asks that the exemptions include verbiage that states a reasonable timetable beyond the 2026 date. In other words, all restaurants and food businesses be able to continue to use gas until a viable technology can be found. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. My name is Keith Harbeck. I own a business here in Sacramento. I own Premier Pools. We've been in business here in Sacramento for 32 years, and we employ over 300 people. First of all, I'd like to say that this ultimate goal of producing electricity efficiently and cost-effectively with wind and solar and water, you know, who could possibly be against that, right? And for my business, obviously, this is going to sound a little self-serving and maybe selfish, but at this point in time, with the technology that's in place, this does have a negative impact on my business and upon consumers in Sacramento. I think the thought is that technologies exist that make electrical options viable and cost-effective and efficient. I can't really speak to inside the home, but I can talk a lot about outside the home, and they just don't exist in the swimming pool industry. Obviously, there's things like fire pits, fire bowls, outdoor barbecues, these things that use natural gas. But just one glaring example is, right now, this would eliminate the option of installing an in-ground spa. There's just not a way to effectively heat with electricity an in-ground spa. So again, I don't know that that's means a lot to a lot of people. It obviously means a lot to me and a lot to the consumers. And I would think builders at this point in time, when they know developing houses within the city limits of Sacramento is going to eliminate some of these outdoor amenities, might think twice about doing that. And finally, I'd like to say that, and again, now I'm speaking out of my field of expertise, but I read something from SMUD that says that 30% of the electricity they produce now is from the burning of natural gas, and by 2030, they hope to limit that to 25%. And I guess my concern is, is if the electrical alternatives are using so much electricity that even 25% of that electricity being produced by natural gas may be more than.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Okay. Well, I'd just like to, I appreciate the idea of there being a feasible and availability thing. I just want to make sure we're not doing a little bit of ready-to-fire aim legislation. Thank you so much.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council. My name is Kate Wilkins. I'm a resident of District Five and a volunteer at 350 Sacramento. I urge the council to adopt the new building electrification ordinance. In December 2019, the city made a commitment to acting on climate when the council passed a climate emergency declaration. One of the most important initial actions is to stop building new fossil fuel lines. Thankfully, the consequences of doing so are wonderful: reduced cost of new construction, more efficient appliances, drastically improved indoor air quality, increased public safety, and making a major step to start meeting our city's climate goals. To say that this ordinance impacts COVID economic recovery and is going to hurt existing buildings and depress new housing construction is not true. This does not impact existing buildings, and there are exemptions if electric is infeasible. Also, the technology does exist now, and this ordinance doesn't even go into effect until 2023, with exemptions in place until 2025. I think the exemptions in the ordinance are generous enough, as written. Do we need to work with business and labor groups for the retrofit strategy process? Absolutely. We are excited to begin that process. I also want to ask that the council makes a commitment to developing a strong plan for workers whose jobs will be impacted by the loss of gas line installation. We must change the framing on this conversation. It's not infeasible to implement this ordinance. It is infeasible not to. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you for taking my call. My name is Steve Wertz. I live in council member Rick Jennings, District Seven. I'm calling to express my strong and urgent support for the new building electrification ordinance. The staff report and work by 350.org has already laid out the rationale for this ordinance. As the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change recognized, we are in a climate emergency. It may appear to some that we have plenty of time, but the science says differently. We must act boldly now. This ordinance is a small but critical step in the right direction. Together with other such actions like SMUD's 2030 Zero Carbon Plan, we can be a leader in the state and nation to make a difference locally. As a local advocate, public health scientist, and psychologist, I've had a career promoting the well-being of children and their families in Sacramento and the state. I am driven by my deep concern for the future, not only of my daughter, but for all the children to come. I've just completed the training through Climate Reality by former Vice President Al Gore on the science of science of climate change that highlighted that we cannot continue to treat the earth as an open sewer for dumping our fossil fuels. Let me be clear, this ordinance is a very reasonable and measured approach. It only impacts new construction in 2023 and does not affect any existing restaurants. But it also does not give a blank check for newly constructed restaurants in the future. And the benefits are clear. It will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and provide many co-benefits, including improved indoor and outdoor air quality, improved public health. All electric construction in operation is also cheaper, safer, and cleaner than expanding reliance on gas infrastructure. Now is the time to act locally. The city council must do its part tonight by passing this new building electrification ordinance. Also, I oppose the switching from May to shall. I think we better have.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Frank Louie, and I'm the executive director for the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We represent over 600 businesses along the Stockton Business Corridor. It is home to the Little Saigon District, which encompasses the city's highest concentration of Asian-owned businesses, of which 12% are minority-owned restaurants. Therefore, we have concerns about the proposed ordinance that would require electrification for all new construction beginning in 2026. The proposed ordinance would have a significant economic and cultural impact on our Asian-owned restaurants because electric kitchen equipment is not widely, widely available. For many restaurants along Stockton Boulevard, an electric replacement for the wok does not exist because the wok cooking requires a higher BTU to achieve wok hay, or the ancient wok scorching process that brings out the desired aroma and flavor in our cuisine. Also, it is shown that the commercial businesses, namely restaurants, only make up 5% of current greenhouse gas emissions. Complying with the ordinance, proposed ordinance is a significant investment. We ask that the language by the council be ambiguous that states stated in such a way that allows for an extension if technology is not widely available. Without this amendment, all future restaurants will face an undue burden and be locked out due to high construction costs to comply. Council members, you're making a major decision today that will have unintended consequences for existing and future generations of restaurant operators. For that reason, we ask that you take caution when voting this ordinance that will have negative consequences for the restaurant industry along Stockton Boulevard. We appreciate your time and consideration. We welcome the opportunity to craft an.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Rosie Yakuba, and I am a District Four resident calling in support of the ordinance. Much of the technology that electrification of buildings relies on is well-proven. For example, 41% of the nation already uses electric heat pumps for HTRAC, and there are cost-effective studies, or there are studies that show that these heat pumps are cost-effective in the Sacramento area, and in fact, are anticipated to save the people home, in homes, up to $600 a year. Fun fact, induction cooktops and woks are up to 60% more efficient at transferring heat to food than their gas counterparts, so they don't have to be as hot to do the same job. This may address some of the concerns of people in restaurants and homes. By the same token, that heat that was shed by those gas stoves. By the same token, that heat that was shed by those gas stoves means that all-electric kitchens are also cooler and safer places to work. So there are reasons beyond climate change to make this switch. It doesn't make sense to continue essentially requiring the installation of natural gas infrastructure in new construction. I know of a recent development in Natomas where people who bought homes during the construction phase could select all-electric appliances. But without policy to require buildings to be all-electric, the cost and saving gains for constructing all-electric are not fully reached because just one person choosing to go with gas requires extending the infrastructure. It is also critical to ensure that those most economically vulnerable in existing buildings transition to electric appliances in a thoughtful, supportive way. The resolution brought by staff to begin that work and the task of looking at water conservation measures as potential mechanism for a just transition for pipe fitters should be passed in conjunction with the ordinance. I'm a mom with kids whose lives will be impacted by what we do and do not be-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure. I am hopeful that we can do right by their generation, and tonight, this hope sits with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager, and Councilmembers. My name is Kevin Fatt, managing partner of Frank Fatt's Restaurant. I appreciate the city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and work towards a carbon-neutral community. The majority of restaurant owners and operators are understanding and supportive in reducing greenhouse gas emissions for a cleaner and safer environment for future generations of Sacramentoans. However, I implore you to pause the decision of this ordinance for restaurants. The expediency of this effort could not have come at a worse time. Restaurants still have yet to start recovering from the pandemic. And this is also should be paused to allow further discussion and planning to, one, provide flexibility for the sunsets on exemptions for manufacturing in restaurants. City council should eliminate or commit with shall to extend these exemptions if it has demonstrated that the technology, cost feasibility, and access does not exist for specifically Asian wok-style cooking, which it currently does not and most likely will not by July first, 2025, even though some not in the industry believe there are. Two, define the process, timing, and criteria for the feasibility waivers before the adoption of the ordinance. Lack of clear definition and criteria would delay vital projects that would provide valuable jobs. It would also create an unfair economic disadvantage, especially for small and minority-owned restaurants. It should also not be determined by a building inspector. And three, ensure the technical panel includes experts and stakeholders representing diverse members and expertise from manufacturing, restaurant, and development industries. Without this, it would negatively impact many of our restaurants, especially our AAPI restaurants. If that is the intent of city council, then it should be reflected in the ordinance language. Again, I urge you to take pause to consider the timing of this ordination, ordinance in relation to the pandemic and allow for more inclusive and diverse representation for thoughtful discussion and planning for restaurants. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the town council. My name is Steve Blanton. I am the executive director of the Power and Alliance. We're primarily represented by Councilmember Gera, but also Councilmember Harris has a significant part of our district, of our area as well. I want to begin by thanking the mayor for moving from May to shall. I think that that does provide us with some of the certainty that we're looking for. I think the second group of comments have promise, but I think they need further study and further input from us. So I would suggest that, as some of the other callers have, that deferring this matter until such time as we could have a clear definition of the waiver process is, I think, most advisable. We have concerns just in terms of manufacturing. We've stated before that manufacturing uniquely uses gas, and there's really no replacement for that, as with the restaurants as well. I would note that we sent in a letter, as I believe others did, and unless I somehow missed it, it was not part of the correspondence packet. So it outlined that and provided, I think, a good amount of evidence to what we were doing. So hopefully, you have access to that. It's been mentioned that many other cities, I think the number of forty-four cities have passed a similar ordinance. And while I'll readily confess that I have not reviewed all forty-four ordinances, of the ones that I have reviewed, many have exemptions similar to the ones that we're seeking in terms of manufacturing, in terms of restaurants, and in terms of not having the burden fall on those who could least afford it in terms of equity and so forth. It's also been said that, you know, don't worry. If you're an existing business, everything's fine. This ordinance is not going to apply to you only to new construction. But I'd note, here tonight, we're talking about beginning the process for existing buildings. So I think there is concern, justifiable concern, in the manufacturing sector, in the small business restaurant sector, in-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
So I would urge you to please defer this matter till we could work out some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor, council members, and city manager, my name is Erica Bjork, and I'm calling today on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. As members of the Mayor's Climate Commission, like many of you, we've been working on this very important step in our city's climate action plan for the last two years, and applaud the focus and attention of this critical issue for our city, our state, and our world. We fully acknowledge that there is a real and immediate need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and work towards a carbon-neutral community. However, tonight's vote by council is not about whether climate change is real or urgent. It is. This is about whether we are creating good policy in our quest to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and create a more inclusive community while navigating a very real economic recovery ahead of us. As written in its published form, the all-electric ordinance for new construction will create conditions that drive inequitable hardships in our minority-owned businesses and the restaurant industry that has been devastated by the pandemic, both of which are vital to the recovery, vibrancy, and culture of our neighborhoods. We urge you to amend the language and continue working with stakeholders to address these concerns. There continues to be critical issues that have not been fully addressed. This includes, one, providing flexibility for the sunsets on exemptions for manufacturing restaurants. We appreciate and applaud the mayor's recommendation tonight for the amendment from May to shall to address this issue. Second, to defining the process, timing, and criteria for the feasibility waivers before the adoption of the ordinance. Again, the ordinance only grants exceptions based on the satisfaction of the building official. Ensuring process is timely, consistent, and expedient is vital so we don't create a cumbersome or unpredictable process. And lastly, ensure the technical panel includes both diversity and expertise from industry, manufacturing, restaurant, and housing, including multiple experts. The tech panel should be a diverse group with experience dealing with the complexities of these issues, both on the building side and equipment side, along with experience in the field. We know the city, under your leadership, can create a model for all-electric that adapts with more technology, becomes feasible for our businesses and building use. Let's be sure we do this right. We strongly urge these amendments and encourage you to discuss them tonight. We will continue to work with you and city staff so we can elevate these efforts and build a more vibrant community, including creating job opportunities and driving innovation and investment.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, it's very hard to hear you. My name is Megan Elsie from District Four. Now is not the best time for the electrification ordinance because twenty years ago was the best time. I support the electrification ordinance because now is the second-best time. We have the technology to transition away from fossil fuels. I also support the resolution to work on transitioning existing buildings. We are in a climate emergency. Remember the smoke last summer where we were stuck inside in a pandemic? We need to slow the effects of climate change like fires as soon as possible. We only have nine years to do this. So we need to stop all new fossil fuel infrastructure. And this ordinance is about new buildings. Building, these buildings is actually cheaper than building buildings with gas infrastructure, and it saves on monthly bills. We need to limit the exemptions and the infeasibility waivers. We need to keep the "May extend" language contrary to what Steinberg suggests. There are current exemptions for restaurants, and restaurants can use the electric HVAC systems, but keep gas stoves for a while anyway. This area of technology is improving rapidly. There are several years for businesses to adjust. So the ordinance is saving money now. We're lowering greenhouse gas emissions significantly. Any delay for future studies will cause more deaths, especially around, among low-income people and people with disabilities due to the effects of climate change.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
This is not a complex ordinance. It is simple and important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is John Norwood. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the California Pool and Spa Association. Unfortunately, none of our members were involved in the stakeholder meetings or invited to attend those meetings despite the fact that a number of them have been in business in Sacramento for decades. Simply said, our association is opposed to this ordinance, and at minimum, are asking for accommodation for natural gas, swimming pool, and spa heaters. We have provided you and your staff with detailed examples of where electricity will not suffice to heat in-ground residential spas or commercial pools and spas at apartment complexes, condos, hotels, motels, swim centers, schools, and acquired facilities, all of which are affected by this proposal. These examples have not been rebutted. I don't believe they can be. And that is in part why the California Energy Commission has indicated that nothing they're doing in their move towards electrification targets, the heating of outdoor water. Our builders are local. They provide good-paying jobs. They use local subcontractors and purchase all their materials through local businesses. The industry has set records for new pool construction each year since the recession. Homeowners want a staycation in their backyards, which includes outdoor pool and spa, outdoor kitchens, barbecues, fire pits, and fireplaces, all which are effectively banned or significantly affected by this. Providing an exception that we are requesting to this ordinance will allow our industry to meet consumer expectations. Without such an exemption, the likely result, and it's ironic, will be the increased use of propane, which is not as safe or as clean as natural gas.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Ilanka Zlatar, and I am the president of Three Fifty Sacramento and resident of District Two in North Sacramento. Today, I'm calling to urge for the strong support of this ordinance, as has been laid out by the council and the mayor's amendments. The staff have done an excellent job of accounting for all sorts of eventualities and details, and I do commend them for the job that they have done in including those provisions. I look forward to them continuing to work with industry, with the Pipe Fitters Union, with the pool and spa industry, as apparently they were not consulted earlier in the process. So I do look forward to their involvement as this goes forward. The reason that I am supportive of this ordinance today is because we know that we are in a state of climate emergency as the city has so established in their climate emergency declaration. And we know that we cannot continue to invest our dollars and our time and energy into fossil fuel infrastructure, which will continue to exacerbate the climate emergency that we face. We need to be able to look our children and the next generation in the eye and tell them that we did everything that was possible to stave off the worst effects of climate change. And this step of approving this electrification ordinance is one step in a journey that we will continue to take together as we continue to bring in the existing buildings. And I'm very supportive of the process that staff have laid out over the next year and a half to come up with a plan that is equitable, that prioritizes low-income-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you very much, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, good evening.
Caller, we can hear you. It's your turn to address the council. Caller, please turn down the device if you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council.
Yes, I'm ready to address the council, and my device is off. Can I start?
Yes, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Karen Shaw. I live in District Four. I have long been alarmed by the worsening climate crisis, which is why I spend a lot of my time advocating for ways of addressing it. And I'm here tonight because I strongly support the ordinance and the resolutions that are before you tonight. Buildings are a major source of emissions, and both exterior emissions in the form of greenhouse gases and interior air pollution. Decarbonization of buildings is essential. It makes great sense to start with new buildings. The ordinance before you tonight will make decarbonization of new buildings mandatory in twenty-three and twenty-six, depending on the height of the building. But it's important to adopt then this ordinance now because that sends a clear signal to the market, and it gives developers time to adapt and prepare. I think that there's a fair process for exemptions and infeasibility waivers. I understand the need for those. I support the amendments that the mayor made tonight. I also strongly support the resolution that's before you for staff to begin working on an equitable, feasible way to transition existing buildings and to also work to assure that workers who are displaced by the decarbonization transitions have access to training and to good new green jobs. So I thank you for your time tonight. I strongly urge you to vote yes, and I think this is an important step coming out of the Mayor's Commission to Sacramento addressing-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Please vote yes.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, hello, City Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Paul Trudeau. I'm proud to be a constituent of Councilmember Alenzuela in District Four. I encourage you to support the building electrification ordinance. Given that the climate crisis is in full emergency mode, I think implementation dates should be sooner, but so be it. I think we can do without new in-ground, outdoor heated spas in order to avoid climate catastrophe. I applaud the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union, UA four-four-seven's ideas for code changes involving rainwater and gray water. That'll boost water conservation and will help those workers make up some of the work hours they anticipate losing as a result of building electrification. I really appreciate their support for this ordinance. I also support rapid and robust electrification retrofit efforts for our existing building stack as a top climate justice priority. Retrofits don't primarily involve code changes, nor would retrofits change the need for new building electrification. So I think the new building code changes can and should be passed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association. We are the voice of the homebuilding industry. I'm not here to debate climate change. I'm not here tonight to debate if the Kings are going to win a championship next year. I'm here just to debate our genuine concern that this ordinance is going to impact the city's ability to meet its state mandated housing goals. Housing is so important for our city. We are in a housing crisis. The best way for the city to address climate change is to build more housing. That would reduce vehicle miles traveled, allow people to drive less, walk, bike, et cetera. There's even a state law, SB 375, that calls us out. We respectfully request that you add a homebuilder representative to the technical advisory panel, and if you move forward with this ordinance, to please, please prioritize housing. That's the best way to address climate change. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
This is Dr. William Pevek, professor emeritus of Vascar Surgy at UC Davis and a resident of Sacramento. I'm representing Climate Health Now, a coalition of physicians and nurses working to protect the health and well-being of current and future Californians. Please support the ordinance to require electrification buildings in Sacramento. Combustion of natural gas in our homes and buildings contributes 14% of Sacramento's greenhouse gas emissions. This ordinance is consistent with the climate emergency declared by the City Council in December 2019 and is a step toward achieving the stated carbon reduction goals in the 2035 Sacramento General Plan. Implementing policy is the only way to achieve stated goals. Combustion of natural gas in our homes and buildings is not only a climate concern but affects our health now. Combustion of national natural gas increases both indoor and outdoor air pollution. The air quality inside our homes with gas ranges often exceeds federal air pollution standards for outdoor air. Gas appliances exacerbate respiratory illnesses and increase childhood asthma. Gas-powered homes and buildings are less safe due to the risk of fire and explosion. The ordinance adequately addresses the concerns raised by the restaurant and building industries. It does not affect existing buildings, provides longer lead times than similar ordinances passed by other California cities, allows some exemptions for commercial cooking, and provides feasibility waiver options. As a physician, I urge you to support this well-written ordinance. Sacramento should not put off action any longer. The needed changes are difficult but necessary. Those most vulnerable will be affected more severely if the council does not act. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor and Council Members, my name is Luke Wilson, and I live in District Four. I've been a resident of Sacramento for many years, but this is the first time I've been moved to speak at a city council meeting. And today, I'm doing it for all our children and grandchildren. The new building electrification ordinance is a vital first step needed for the city to meet its decarbonization goal. The ordinance is not only good for the city, but for future generations throughout the world. So please vote for the future today. Vote yes. There are other reasons for voting for this ordinance. It will lower both interior and outside air pollution. It will lower costs to build housing in the city. It will save city residents from paying for stranded gas infrastructure investments in the future. I hope you will also support the second phase of the electrification of Sacramento by directing city staff to develop within the next 18 months a plan to electrify all buildings in the city over the course of the next 25 years. Please have your staff develop a plan that is just and equitable for all Sacramentoans. Please vote yes, and thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. I am local Sacramento chef David Suhu. I want to make this clear. Everyone is for better climate for our kids. Everyone wants to eliminate CO2 emissions and no climate danger to our kids. No gas in 2026 is unrealistic. We can safely build competitive electric cooktops if we include our local experts and chefs. At this time, there are more questions than answers. Getting an exemption in 2026 to cook with no gas is a nightmare. I suspect that exemptions are only for coffee roasters, beer breweries. Problem is, no one knows. Getting an exemption and cooking with electricity only, what's going to happen is, one, will stop new gas and hydrogen technology that makes gas more efficient than electricity. Yes, we can phase out gas to make sure that there are no blackouts. Induction cooking is radiation. Fresh ingredients will get radiated, and the food is no longer firm and young. This is why we only cook with fresh, farm-to-fort ingredient in Sacramento. This is why we do not eat chemically preserved foods and radiated foods. Sacramento will no longer have great Chinese and Asian restaurants, simply because they're going to go to Elk Grove, Carmichael, and not in Sacramento City. When we move ahead, I hope that the city will include our diverse community of chefs and experts. Thank you for giving me this time to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Katie Hanson. I'm with the California Restaurant Association. We appreciate your work on this item and the opportunity for restaurants to provide input throughout the process. Our interest is not to disrupt the important work of the mayor and council on climate change, but more to highlight the practical impacts of just one piece of the proposed ordinance before you. The Sacramento chapter of the California Restaurant Association is made up of hundreds of local restaurants, many of which are among independent chef-driven restaurants. The city has done so much to encourage over the years to help revive our local community and create a vibrant scene prior to the COVID order shutdown. Natural gas bans often have a unique and negative impact on restaurants. Restaurants use natural gas in their preparation of a wide variety of cuisines and dishes, coffee roasting, and for the quality of the technique one gets from natural gas cooking methods. Many restaurants specialize in making products which require the use of specialized gas appliances, including flame-seared meats, charred vegetables, for the use of intense heat from the flame of a wok. Restaurants specializing in ethnic foods may be unable to prepare many of their specialties without natural gas. The use of natural gas has traditionally been a tool to facilitate the art of cooking for so many restaurants, and we want to continue to raise concerns about the impacts of a ban for future restaurant developments. The impact of a natural gas ban on commercial space will lead to a smaller population of commercial spaces with gas pickups. We remain concerned that a ban could create an increase in future rents and leases on existing properties, with those properties with natural gas would see a higher demand from those interested in leasing commercial space designed for restaurants. While it is true there may be some innovative cooking methods out there and more being developed, not all restaurants are the same in terms of their culinary specialties. Going all-electric may work for some, however, it does not work for all-restaurant types. To that end, the waiver process should be real and not subjective. We would ask that you continue to improve this proposed ordinance by making-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Remove the sunset on exemptions from restaurants. Define the process timing and criteria for the feasibility of waivers.
Thank you for your comments.
Ensure that the technical panel includes restaurants.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers. This is David Nelson, representing the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce and the Director of Policy. We really appreciate the opportunity to not only speak to you today, but also the opportunity to be a part of this ongoing discussion around something that is very important to the city of Sacramento. And we really appreciate and support the broader initiative of protecting the environment and working with the city to achieve those broader solutions. We would be mindful to remind the council that the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce exists to protect and represent the balance of needs of equity, business, and culture, and that's why we have continually shared the concerns around preserving, in this case, as this ordinance is concerned, the Asian wok culture, which is easily far older than the city of Sacramento and even our country. It's thousands of years old, and we're very mindful of that. And we appreciate the mayor and the council for the amendments that have come forth prior and as well as tonight in recognizing the importance of providing clarity and surety to minority business owners as to where the onboarding will be for this ordinance as it pertains to the technology and the advancement of technology to reach these broader global initiatives for climate change and carbon emissions. And that's why we're really excited to partner with S-MUD and the creation of a wok innovation kitchen, and we look forward to working closely with them as we move forward to create these technologies solutions that not only Sacramento is looking for, but the broader Asian restaurants-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you so much for your consideration, and we appreciate your consideration of this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I can hardly hear you. Anyways, the city of Sacramento is in an excellent position to be gatekeeper for the county as far as the production of greenhouse gases. But they have to decide to be able to measure all the greenhouse gases that are produced in the city outside of homes, outside of restaurants, and they have to be able to- they should use, they need a measurement system, but they need to be able to use tax codes such to not incentivize the use of natural gas in the city, which they currently do. They need to get rid of that right away. They need to ensure that the local utility, electric utilities, S-MUD, is not using renewable energy credits from net energy metering in a proper manner. Trust but verify. You need to have a system to make sure S-MUD is not counting or impairing contracts and taking people's renewable energy credits. We got to watch that we are not simply transferring the greenhouse gas production from inside the home out to Rancho Seco, consume this facility. So yeah, trust but verify. I'm looking forward to participating in the feasibility study for the restaurant equipment. I am amazed, I'm concerned that the city doesn't already have that. That it's a shame. We put people on the moon here in 10 years, and you guys can't even figure out if a restaurant gear is the proper to use. So it looks like I got another 10 seconds. But anyways, I'm, my fourth-grade math teacher would give an ass to your planning group. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Taylor Kidd, representing Regent Restaurants. We represent the locally-owned independent restaurants in Sacramento. Our request from our board is that you would remove restaurants from inclusion in electrification as it is not conducive to the economy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mikey Hohse. On behalf of Assemblymember Jim Cooper, I would like to read the following statement. I would like to thank, I would like the Sacramento City Council to seriously consider what this proposal will do to our already hurting small businesses and restaurants, as well as our efforts to create affordable housing. There is no doubt that we need to take steps to continue combating climate change. However, I believe this ordinance goes too far. Whether it is housing affordability, climate change, or COVID-19, California is in a very delicate situation. As the state works to decarbonize all sectors of our economy, we need a diverse set of clean energy solutions. As we are well aware, COVID-19 has created a steep financial shortfall at all levels of government and even areas of the private sector. It is more critical than ever that our efforts to decarbonize offer cost-effective solutions, not only today, but also for decades to come. Californians pay the highest rates in the country for electricity. How will this proposal affect low-income families and the middle class? It will widen the disparity between the haves and the have-nots. People seeking properties with gas will only exacerbate affordability issues. Sacramento's housing and property market has exploded in recent years, and it's priced many people out. This proposal will only make this worse. I urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you, Assemblymember Jim Cooper.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Holden. I reside in District Five, and I request a postponement of this ordinance vote. Jennifer Venema did a fine job of explaining the city's process for the 100% green electrification of Sacramento. However, S-MUD is not ready to execute the city's plans for the green electrification of Sacramento. This is another example of the people of Sacramento being sold a good dream they want to believe, but not being told the facts about their electricity provider. Here are the facts about S-MUD. One, S-MUD is not a California SB 100 compliant company. SB 100 is about requiring one, requiring green electricity. S-MUD also isn't certain when they will be compliant with SB 100. Two, S-MUD still needs to purchase 7,000 acres of land for solar panels and windmills to be SB 100 compliant, and they don't know when the land will be purchased. Three, S-MUD does not have an EMP-resistant infrastructure, leaving our electrical grid vulnerable to attacks by hackers, prone to failure during solar flares, and inefficient in transporting electricity over distances. Four, currently, S-MUD is purchasing electricity from other states, some of which are burning coal and other fossil fuels to generate the electricity S-MUD is selling to us. We can want 100% green electricity, but that doesn't mean that S-MUD is able to sell us the 100% green electricity that supporters of this ordinance are expecting. Please postpone this final vote on the ordinance until S-MUD is ready to sell us 100% green electricity, along with a budget from S-MUD for conversion to electricity that has been broken down into the cost increase per customer. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much to the members of the public who took the time to weigh in here tonight. I'm going to go first, and then I'm going to go in order of my colleagues coming up on the board here. I think I'd begin with, I think Ms. Holden's public comments here are a very good transition to asking the leadership of S-MUD, who I believe is on the call here tonight. Are you ready?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Jamie Kotlup with S-MUD's regional and local government affairs team. Thank you for that question. Yes, we are ready to answer your question. We have-
Oh, good. You're answering my question. I'm sorry.
Yes, and so we do have this as part of our planning process. We do project out 20 years, and then we update our plans on an annual basis and every five years. So we have, as part of that planning process, you know, we've adopted our 2030 carbon-zero plan, which gets us to carbon-free generation by 2030. And so we are looking at all scenarios under the scope of that plan to get us to achieve that goal. And so that includes looking at not only increased impact based on electricity- And so that includes looking at not only increased impact based on electrification of buildings, but also looking at vehicle electrification and other distributed generation that would be coming on the grid to help support us to achieve our goals, so increasing the amount of rooftop solar, utility-scale solar, battery storage, and other new technologies that may be coming our way.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm sure, stay on the line, because I think other colleagues might have some questions. Well, let me, let me begin here. I want to begin by making some thank yous, because tonight's seminal vote here did not just happen overnight. Mayor Cabaldon, former Mayor Cabaldon and I appointed the Sacramento, West Sacramento Climate Commission in 2018, November of 2018, and I want to thank the Climate Commission, all 19 of its members, along with the dozens of technical advisory committee members, and the chair, Anne Stausfall, who led an incredibly detailed and intense process that leads us to tonight. Your leadership and the leadership of this commission has been vital to the future of our city, and I want to thank you. Our city staff, from Jennifer Venema to Matt Hurtel, to Helen Self, to Kelly Sherfy, to Paul Gale, to Greg Sandland, to Julia Burrows, all of you, and if I'm leaving anybody out, I apologize, but this has been an incredible effort by our city team. I want to thank SMUD, Paul Lau, the CEO and the general manager, who came to our press conference last week and indicated SMUD's full support of this direction, along with Arlen Orchard, Scott Blunk, and yes, and Jamie Cutlip. Thank you for being here tonight and for all of your help. PG&E, why do I mention PG&E and Kelly Cunningham? Because they are changing their business model and going electric, and they support what we are doing. 350 Sacramento Ecos, and all the environmental activists pushing us to move faster, even faster, to reach carbon neutrality. And yes, all of the business associations, Metro Chamber, the Asian Chamber, the many local restaurant owners, the Manufacturers Association, whether you're for it or against it, or comfortable with us going forward tonight, I thank you, because you have participated throughout the entire process and made many important suggestions along the way. This is not new. In December of 2019, this city council unanimously declared a climate emergency. Nine months ago, in August of 2020, this city council, or the prior city council, reviewed the Climate Commission recommendations and directed city staff to begin working on this electrification ordinance with specific timelines. There have been over 50, 50-plus public meetings and webinars discussing this very subject during the timeline that I just mentioned. Great public process. And so I understand the outline of the argument and the opposition, and I would phrase it this way. If, and let me say this, if we brought this forward without the consideration or the input of our business community, the concerns and the criticism would be more than warranted and would justify us not voting tonight. But as I said a moment ago, just the opposite is true. There are two ways, I suppose, to approach this. One would be to listen to some of the skeptics and the critics and say, let's not pass any ordinance until we are absolutely sure that all of the technology in place, is in place for every component of this ordinance. The result of doing that is we would never, ever get started. The other way, which is the way I hope we will choose tonight, is to set these targets for the middle of this century, not overnight, for the middle of this century, especially for restaurants and restaurant equipment, and to work together to advance the technology. The Asian Chamber's idea, for example, of, of, I want to get the exact term here, of a WAK Innovation Kitchen, is a great idea. I know SMUD has preliminarily said that they would want to help support that. I think the city should be investing money in collaboration with other partners to make sure that we are advancing the technology and not just waiting for others. Why now? Jennifer Venema laid this out, but I think it is really important to restate it. We have stated as a city that we aim to get to carbon neutral no later than 2045, and hopefully by 2030. Climate change is not some esoteric issue that, oh my God, the world may burn up, but in the meantime, we can just go about our business. There are specific public health consequences in our Sacramento community. I mean, to read the statistic that, in a recent study that indicates that using a gas stove increases the likelihood of asthma in children by 42% is enough to take bold action. We have among the worst air quality in the region, and if we are not aggressive about reducing fossil fuels, then we are leaving generations of children, and this generation of children, to live with the same health impacts. Yes, this is about the economy, but by setting these targets now with the right kind of flexibility, we send a market signal. We send a market signal that we, that the market will adapt to and help us increase that, improve that technology sooner rather than later. Job training, think about the opportunity for electricians. I'm so proud and pleased to have the support of the Plumbers Local 447, really far-reaching to say, you know what, we may be a little bit uncomfortable in the short run, but we recognize that, for example, with water conservation, there is going to be new pathways for plumbers to advance their workload here in Sacramento and beyond. Thank you for your support. If we reduce the number of buildings that need a retrofit in the future, we will be saving money by starting now. And so, yes, the question, why, why now? There are very compelling reasons, from healthcare to, to sending the right kind of market signal. I know there's a lot of concern about process, but let's be clear about a couple of facts here. The Technical Advisory Committee, which will determine the exceptions for feasibility and availability, are made up extensively by representatives of the business community. Three manufacturing representatives, three business representatives, including at least one cultural/ethnic business association representative, two restaurant representatives, a manufacturing technology expert consultant, an affordable housing developer, another market rate developer compared to one labor rep. The business community is well-represented here as, as they should be. Here's maybe the most important point. Once this Technical Advisory Committee makes its recommendations, the recommendations must come back to your elected city council before they are final. So let's just say that, in the extreme, and it's not going to happen, that the exceptions are too weak, and that the business-dominated committee does not recommend to the city council that the exceptions be, be very clear and fair, and that if the technology is not there, that the timeline be extended. Let's just say that happens. Well, there's a, there's a failsafe check. It comes back to the city council. And what we've said tonight, in terms of my amendment, is that the future city council shall extend the timelines if the technology is not feasible and available. I don't know how much better we could do here to balance the risk versus the imperative. Finally, think about the logic of the opposition argument for just a moment. We all agree that there is a climate emergency. We all agree. Forty-five other cities are ahead of us. And by the way, most of the major cities in California have already done this. We would be the first city in the Central Valley. If we'd say no to this, what are we really saying? We're saying, let the other big cities take the responsibility for a problem that has a tremendous impact on our residents, on our community. You know, the world is full of examples where people worry that the task ahead was just not possible. Can't do it. Technology won't be there. Really? Look at electric vehicles. You got Ford now making a 150 electric truck because Tesla got out front and pushed the market, and the state of California got involved in helping to subsidize the development of electric vehicle technology. Look at the advances we have made with cell phones and cellular technology in short times. You want to talk about COVID? Think about how we have all adapted, not in four years or five years, as this ordinance allows, but in months, to adapt our work schedules and the way we go about doing our businesses. I think about the state regulating NOX water heaters and how that created an emerging market for, for renewable energy water heaters. The same thing with refrigerants. The state set a regulation, and boom, the market changed. Look at solar, wind. They're now the cheapest sources of energy, and just a short time ago, those sources of energy were nearly irrelevant. Think about battery storage. It's one-tenth the price of what it was 10 years ago. So yes, we set a target, and we say to our business community, if we can't meet it, if SMUD can't meet it, the most reliable, cost-efficient public utility in the country, then we'll extend the time, or we're going to push ourselves and each other to do the right thing by the climate. What's wrong with that? There's everything right with it. And I urge you not to vote. Councilmember, who is first, Madam Clerk? Is it Councilmember Valenzuela?
That's correct.
Okay, please.
Thank you, ma'am. So I've been an environmental justice and advocate for a long time. You know, I grew up in Oildale. I'm a lifelong asthmatic. I take daily medication to breathe. You know, fighting the oil and gas industry and state policy has been my primary focus in my work for the last several years. And I have to say, nobody, I will speak for my own self, I believe nobody else wants this to work in Sacramento as much as I do. And I've had a lot of people tell me about this ordinance, that I can't let perfect get in the way of good, and that's really not what we're talking about here. This ordinance creates real harm right now, just as it's drafted, to the workers who are losing jobs and have no guarantee of job replacement or near-term strategy to make sure that they can recruit those lost hours, to the residents who are living now with high-emitting appliances that we're completely leaving out of this ordinance, to the low-income ratepayers, frankly, who are very likely holding the bulk of the $63.5 million in debt that SMUD has from last year, and SMUD doesn't know what they're going to have to do for rates to implement their zero-carbon plan. We frankly don't know. When I asked it law and ledge, you know, Ms. Cutlip said there's a lot of variables at play, and I would agree with that. We don't know what this impact will be on low-income ratepayers, and more than anything else, to do an ordinance without knowing that is irresponsible, to put it frankly. And all of this is for an ordinance that's going to reduce the equivalent of 0.2% of our current annual emissions, and I use that just for scale purposes, because this does nothing to address current emissions, because we're not tackling existing buildings. And I just, what really sucks to me is that it's entirely avoidable. It's entirely avoidable. We have in front of us an ordinance that's really symbolic, and I say that not to say that it's not important, but to say that it doesn't actually impact buildings yet, that we will have to adopt another ordinance next year when the building code is updated, that will then kick into effect in 2023. So basically, what we're doing right now is we're stating our intention to do something, and we're giving staff direction on what we want them to do over the next year with feasibility and existing buildings, and hoping, and they're going to have to bring something back for us to actually adopt that'll actually be what comes into effect in 2023. So there's really no harm in us taking this next year to figure some stuff out. There is no harm in that, and nothing lost, because we could still have it. We could still adopt something tonight that says, we're going to do this, and we could still have it in effect at the same time. And part of the reason I'm so focused on this isn't because there's been state legislators who backed off of this, it isn't because the California Energy Committee Commission has backed off of this, it isn't because across the state, in Los Angeles, for example, which also does not have a building decarbonization policy on the book. This discussion is playing out right now. People have mentioned cities like Berkeley and San Francisco. I know people who work in Berkeley and San Francisco. You want to know what they did differently? What they're doing now is they did the ordinance with the community, they did it with the businesses. Those community members have been at the table from the beginning, they have talked about displacement concerns, they have talked about cost concerns, they are solving for those problems before anything kicks into effect, and that is what's so different, because in every region in California, if there's one thing that is for certain, is that the energy grid looks different in every single community in the state of California. No two communities have the same thing going on. No two communities, no other community has SMUD, no other community. I mean, we all are different, and so what makes decarbonization policy meaningful is when you build it with the community to reflect the unique needs of that community, and you build it in a way that really looks at incentives, that looks at barriers, that looks at technology, that looks at the grid, and plans something that's going to address those needs without impacting ratepayers while ensuring feasibility needs are being met, while making sure that people understand and feel good about what they're doing, because in the end, climate change and fighting climate change is more than anything about individual choice, just as much as it is about these top-down policies. So I would just like to propose something here, because in my mind, this is a symbol. We're going to vote on this again next year. We have to, the building codes are being updated, and so what I'd like to propose is, okay, let's pass this, right? We're passing something that says, we want new buildings to be no gas. But I'd like to amend this first, to make a finding in this finding section that says that part of the reason we're doing this is to address public health and safety impacts, particularly for people of color, immigrants, indigenous people, low-income people, and to promote the well-being of Sacramento's most vulnerable communities, right? Because I think that needs to be our ultimate North Star, is that we want this to help those communities. And in tandem with that, I'd also like to amend the outline for how we move forward. Right now, there's an outline in the ordinance that talks about the feasibility process, which I appreciate that it's detailed and that there's going to be a lot of engagement, and it's going to come back. Would, I'd like the same thing with the existing buildings, and I'd like it to say that we are going to adopt some, we're going to hear this before the end of 2022, it's going to have a target of 2045, and that the process that staff is going to do is going to be with community, right? And it's going to address all of the following. So I want to talk about equitable process and outcomes, including avoiding bill increases, ensuring benefits flow to renters, and that we're creating meaningful jobs. That's step one. Step two is that we need to look at the incentives and the requirements, because right now, frankly, the incentives don't match, and I don't think anybody will tell you that the incentives are going to cover 100% of the cost of buying all-electric. A lot of the analysis you see of costs as lifetime costs for a reason, because it does cost more. Induction stuff does cost more, and so we need to think about how we actually match the incentives. We need to look at the regulatory obstacles, which are real. We need to look at how we phase in implementation. There's a lot of research that's coming out. I've been on a lot of webinars lately. I've talked to staff about basically a geographic strategy, what it would look like to really tackle this neighborhood by neighborhood, rather than cutting just new and old buildings, because that just perpetuates inequity and increases risk on those who can't afford to transition off of gas and are stuck on that system. I want to talk about financial assistance for low-income residents and businesses, and opportunities for the other things that we could be doing, distributed renewable energy, energy storage, energy efficiency improvements, building envelope upgrades. There's a lot we can do around buildings that isn't just about the natural gas pipeline. I think, frankly, we've oversimplified this, and I think we could engage in a process in the next year that really does the work and answers the questions and brings back something next fall when we need to. and brings back something next fall when we need to re-adopt this anyways, that could really reflect what the community needs and wants and actually address the equity and health concerns that we're seeing we have. So that would be my motion, Mayor, would be to take what you suggested and to add on a public health finding um, for the main ordinance for new buildings and to put some specificity into the existing building strategy per what I outlined.
So, thank you. First of all, let me just make a couple of comments because I, I think it's, uh, you, you're just essentially asking me, I mean, on the one hand, I think I respectfully disagree with your characterization of that this is not a huge step. We are talking about setting the standard for new building construction in Sacramento going forward. That's a big step. It is true that we deliberately did not address retrofit for some of the reasons that you've just described, that it is going to take more work. It is going to take, I think, an even more intensive community process. And so while I kind of disagree with your characterization, I actually welcome your leadership because I know that you are, um, I, I know that you're passionate about this and you've had a lot of experience around this. So I think if I'm understanding your requests here, I think I'm okay with it, but I just want to make sure that I understand it.
Well, and just to be clear, ma'am, what I said was it's symbolic. I didn't say it wasn't important, you know, I said it, it's not an actual binding ordinance at this stage.
It is, no, but it is because it, 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 it has more pieces to co- to complete the work, but it does set a timeline. That's why we've got so much trepidation from some of the callers who are from, but we don't have to argue about it. It's okay.
Yeah, well, and to address your, your component on the second thing, right? So the part of the reason that I think it's so important to include existing buildings with new buildings is the heart of part of the equity concern because what's gonna happen with the gas system over time, what we're already seeing it happen is it's increasing in cost. And so what we're doing, very similar to solar and other things, is folks who can afford to are transitioning off of the system and they're leaving behind the people who can't afford, the people who are in the most expensive buildings to retrofit. And as costs go up and as those ratepayers leave, we are going to see an increasing cost burden on the lowest income ratepayers and renters. So to do building decarbonization equitably, and this is where I think traditional environmental groups have really led cities astray, is they've made it sound so simple. Just don't do new buildings. But it ignores the context of where buildings are at and it it sets us up to increase the disparity rather than confront the disparity. So what I'm talking about is let's do that work. And I think we can in the next year and adopt an ordinance next summer and fall. That's really great.
So would you be, so let me see if I can just, so your findings I think are great. Um, let, let's add those findings. Would you be all right with, um, adding to the motion an intent to, to work with our team? And we need you involved to bring back, say, within sixty days, an outline for how we move forward with, uh, the retrofit issues with, with the, um, with some of the essentials that you mentioned, i.e. that the retrofit, um, process and eventual policy be focused on, uh, on economic equity, including incentives, minimizing costs. Um, and, and working with the community, something like that, because I think what we, what we have to do now is do exactly what you're saying, which is to whi- which is to develop a work plan. If you're not only involved, but in a lead position and we commit to bringing that back within, say, sixty days, we will then be off, I think, in the direction that you are seeking. It just might be an easy way to, I just don't know how to quite craft it. That's all I'm.
I get you. And, um, as long as there's still the second part of this resolution that deals with the existing building strategy provides the direction that I just outlined in terms of the goals of what we'd like the process to adopt, I'm happy to work with staff. In fact, the sad part was, you know, we delayed this at Law &amp; Ledge for a couple, a few weeks, and we had convened this really great working group of our Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, of the utilities, of labor and of staff. And, um, we were starting to have these conversations. So I think sixty days is reasonable to come back with the work plan for council to, to look at and give input on and how we proceed to answer these questions.
So I would ask for a motion, well, you're making the motion. I know the council member, Geta and Chenier wanted to make a motion here, just in fairness, they, uh, but, but either way, I don't really care. Uh, whoever, whoever ma- makes the motion, but, um, to add to the resolution, the findings on, um, uh, on making sure that all the work we do in this area, um, that we are cognizant of and mitigating the impact on our most vulnerable communities and two, that within sixty days, we bring back a work plan for retrofit that, um, is focused again on, um, addressing the impact on our most vulnerable communities. I think that's
I think was the second part. So part one, yes, public health. And to be clear, it's about mitigating harm, but also promoting the well-being of our most vulnerable communities. Part two would be an existing building strategy by the end of next year that looks at decarbonization by twenty forty-five and meets the goals that I've outlined, including bill, no bill increases, equitable access, feasibility incentives, et cetera. And then part three, which you just added, would be to come back in sixty days with an outline process for council to review.
Okay, so you're saying that the intent of the retrofit ordinance would be, um,
To confront the questions that are being asked, yes.
Yeah, okay, I think that's fine because it's all our work going forward anyways. I think that's fine. Okay, it sets us, it sets a direction for where we want, where we want to, uh, go over the next sixty days, um, six months and one year. Okay. Let us turn it over to some other members, your Vice Mayor Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I want to be clear. So, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, so what you're talking about is basically the way I'm phrasing it in my head is a community implementation plan, right? So really to do outreach um, of how, I, I think what, what we're trying to do today, we're coming into this was the what? And you're giving us a lot more on the how, if that makes sense, that, so I have that kind of
Yeah, that's
That's very simplistic, I know.
No, I actually love the way you phrase it. I wish I had thought to be that succinct. Thank you.
Go, go ahead. You could, you, it's all yours. So, so I, I think it's good. I mean, I, I the only and, and we're keeping the mayor's sixty days in there to bring back kind of a timeline work plan of how that should work. Oh, it, I, I, I'm fine with that. Um, I think it's, it's the right thing to do. The only thing that gives me some hesitation, and this is not a problem, it's just something that we have to figure out with staff, is we have, um, so much meeting fatigue in my district. Um, and I'm sure others have the same. From what we've done with homelessness, certainly for D five, what we've done with Aggie Square, uh, a number of other things that we're continually out there. I, I, I just want to think about how we don't do this completely as a standalone because there's so many issues that are important and tied into this. This is not, it's not a one-off by any means. It's, it's in many ways a culture change. And that involves so many other facets of how our constituents live their lives. So I, I, I don't know how to give direction on that. I don't want to give direction on that, but, but just asking our staff to really think about it. So it's not Jennifer and Julia and their folks sitting in a, in a room going, this is how we should do it. It really has to involve so much else of what we do. And I think it becomes even, um, a greater positive impact to the city over time to be able to do that. And I, and I would just ask the city manager, I mean, and, and the Assistant City Manager, Jasso, as we do so many of these things, how do we do that? So we're thinking holistically about our future versus doing one-offs. Um, with that, I, I'm gonna, I, I think you'd have a motion on the floor. It would be wonderful to see it in writing um, at some point, right? Um, but, um, I'm, I know Mr. Guerra is next. I'm gonna let him second it, but uh, I'm, I'm supportive of moving in that direction, I think. I appreciate the work. I appreciate the leadership. Um, I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, it will take more time, but this is a little bit of do it right, um, and get it right. And, and if it takes a little bit longer, I do think, and I think the mayor's put this out and um, you know, we've now had this similar conversations twice in Law &amp; Ledge and once at the council, at least, um. But, uh, I, I do think it's really important to set out those goals because for, for the business community, have, understanding that it's happening is really important. Um, there are so many times where we take action or we don't take action and say, well, put this off and come back and put it off and come back. So I, I'm, I'm adamant that we get going. Um, it's not perfect. It will never be perfect. Um, but we just need to keep working at it to get it as right as we can. So I, I'm supportive and I'll let Mr. Guerra, uh, if he wishes, second your motion. If he, if he declines that, I'll come back and do it. Okay.
Councilman Geta.
Well, thank you. And with that, I'll, I'll second the motion. All, the only, uh, gripe I'll say is I wish you would have seconded my, my sixty day, uh, continuance motion at Law &amp; Ledge so we could have kind of gotten to that same point because I think we're, we're, now we're back at the same, uh, uh, you know, situation where we're trying to get as much as we can during that timeframe. Uh, I, no, I think it's good. I think, I think the way you outlined it and the way you framed, framed it, uh, you know, uh, Councilmember Chenier, uh, you know, the, the community outreach strategy, I, I think we need to coin that, uh, somewhere. Um, uh, is, uh, is the best way to, to talk about this. Uh, and I also want to also commend uh, you, Councilmember Valenzuela, in highlighting the change about the public health, um, findings. And now I'm gonna put my, my hat on as, um, as the Chair of the Air, Air Quality Management District. Today, our air quality levels are in the unhealthy. So for those of any of us who have families who have respiratory challenges, today is a very bad day to be outside. And that only is going to continue, um, as well. And one of the, the unfortunate things is our region has been ranked fifth worst in the nation by American Lung Association and tenth uh, when it comes to particulate matters. And you get it even worse when there are fires, but just on the nature of ozone, that's an issue. Now, there's the health aspect of it, but there's a bigger risk here that we do have. And that is because we're on federal non-attainment zone, we actually risk losing our federal transportation dollars if we don't make the changes. And we have gotten to a point where the low hanging fruit is gone. Um, you know, we've done a lot of the big issues and now we have to tackle the, the very tough decisions about how we move forward. So the fact that we have the, the, uh, twenty forty-five, you know, target is, is a good way of of getting us in a path and a direction. Um, let me go back in again to thanks. And I want to thank, uh, again, uh, some of the, uh, the staff here who spent a lot of time on this. Julia Burrows from, uh, the mayor's office, uh, you know, you, you spent a, a critical amount of time of listening to many of my constituents who, uh, are both in the industrial, manufacturing, restaurant, particularly the Asian American Pacific Islander uh, in the Little Saigon area, uh, one of, uh, what I think is one of the richest, uh, areas where we also have, you know, such a diaspora of, of different, uh, 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 foods out there. I, I heard from, uh, one of the owners of Alonso's that, uh, you know, posole is, uh, is, uh, recession-proof and and obviously it survived even more, you know, the, the culture there. But there, there, there are impacts to those restaurants owners. Uh, so I want to acknowledge, uh, those, those challenges. Um, I also want to thank Alison Jo and, and Koi Satrin in my office for the, you know, constantly connecting with so many of our employers and, uh, and small business owners from, from both sides. Because there is a symbiotic relationship of making sure that we have a strong industry that is employing people and hell, and creating local jobs. And we have to have a, a strong commercial industry to make sure that they are uh, being sustainable. And they're the ones who are providing locally and always donating to our local causes. So thank you to our staff and all of the industry partners who participated in that. You know, I would do want to also recognize, uh, again, you know, our workers like four, four, seven, who, who stepped up on, on the, on this and said, we have another challenge, which is how, as we're facing our, our water shortage challenges, how do we also uh, look at being on the proactive side? How do we be innovators? Uh, and I want to bring up also that, that, you know, let's not forget that another opportunity for those workers in the, in the, uh, home, in the piping industry is thinking about where does hydrogen technology come in here? That's the next solution of liquid fuel that has the ability for us to provide more jobs and opportunity. We have one hydrogen manufacturer here, but as we move forward and we think about, you know, the, the, the future of technology for battery backup systems, whether, whether it's for our hospitals or, or large employers or whatnot. The current solution is having diesel engines near communities in the middle of our neighborhoods. Um, even the size of locomotives that we have to turn on and release particulates out in the area. So I think there's a, there's a proactive side where I do think that, uh, as we move forward, and it was in the first motion that we did for our climate action, which is being aggressive on how we are leading on the solutions here. So one, um, you know, part of the, the coming out of law and legislation, this, uh, this ordinance not only created an exemption for manufacturers and the restaurants, but it also gave direction staff to start pulling together um, the people to create this innovation center for our restaurants and teaching our, our entrepreneurs how to be able to move and transition. Um, you know, be able to create the Walk Innovation Center on Stockton Boulevard, I think is a great idea. And the fact that somebody wants to partner and put in resources is great. The city should also be part of that in, in helping, uh, move that process forward. And we should be working with both the UC Davis and Saxley School of Engineering to create the innovation for that project. So I think on that, I do want to thank Chef David Sohu, Kevin Phat, Frank Louie, all who have brought this issue forward and said, we should be proactive on this. Um, you know, one of the biggest challenges that we faced in the industrial area was the fact that our, our, um, our, our gas infrastructure is actually old and falling apart. In fact, we almost lost one of our largest manufacturers here, Procter and Gamble, that if anybody uses, uses Tide as their, their clothes, uh, detergent is produced, part of the product is produced here. Um, and we almost lost it because they had to retire a major gas line because it was so old and the cost to replace that was unfeasible. So we also have these challenges of an infrastructure in the gas industry where PG&E is looking to transition. So we have to start thinking of alternatives in this. It isn't a black and white issue when it comes to, you know, uh, just on the industry side. So thinking about being proactive, being innovators for us, acknowledging that there is a challenge for workers, there is a challenge for our businesses, and the language and the amendments that the mayor has brought up provide us with some commitment that we're going to revisit this in twenty twenty-five and that we're going to have not just consultants, but practitioners uh, involved in this, making sure that we have the retro, restaurant, uh, the, the Sacramento Restaurant Association and Region Restaurant, which is locally small, family-owned business owners um, involved in that process, I think is critical to be able to make sure that as we develop those guidelines in this next year, we do that forward. Uh, and that's in the, that's in the language and legis- and that was put forward today. So I think tho- those, uh, are key pieces, um, that are gonna help us. And also the appeal process to make sure that we, as we move forward with these regulations, there's an actual process in there. So where we are today, coming out of law and legislation, the com- the, the, the conversations with so many folks has got us to a point where we're taking that big step moving forward. Um, I, I want to also, you know, uh, again, uh, end by saying that, um, we're gonna find out that there are other areas where we need to work through. So, you know, as we look, heard from the spa industry, that's something that we've never heard of. This process that we've outlined in this ordinance and now the language that Councilmember Valenzuela, Valenzuela has put forward is actually helping us create a process for other industries so that they can help transition into that best area. We have to act now. We have to be able to address our health issues. And we have to be innovative and proactive and making sure that we're becoming the leaders in developing that new technology. It's not gonna be good enough for us to just set a high standard, but to be able to get, also be the producers and the exporters of those technologies. I think Sacramento can lead on it. We're leading on it now. And we should lead on it with a workforce inequity, mine, and a health lens on it as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to second the, the motion there. And we know we still have more work to do, um, uh, on this project. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta. Before I move to, uh, the remaining members, to everyone at first, deserves to be heard, I just think for clarity purposes, Councilmember Valenzuela, possible to use the technology to put your two, uh, rather lengthy but important suggestions up on the screen? And in addition to those two, uh, my suggestion about the sixty day, uh, comeback as well as the language, uh, the Shaw language and the manufacturing language that I spoke about at the beginning, those would form the basis of the motion, the staff resolution plus those would form the basis of the motion, the staff resolution plus what is on the screen here. So I think I want everyone to have at least a chance to look at that. It is it basically what Councilmember Valenzuela is doing is helping us begin to prepare for the next stage of of this discussion and debate. So that's there. So now let's let's move on to the other members. Who was next?
Let me leave this up there.
You don't have to. It's okay.
Okay.
But just maybe be prepared to put it back up. If BB, thank you. Okay.
Councilmember Valenzuela, can you email that to me if you could, please? That the the note that you.
Yeah. Want to be careful about the Brown Act here, everybody. You know, so yeah, just.
Can we ask the city attorney really quick if it's okay if I email this to the council?
Yeah, can?
Yes, you may. It's Sandra Talbot, City Attorney's Office. You may email it. No commenting back and forth related to the email, but for brevity, quickness purposes, and it can be emailed.
Sandra, as I said, nothing to worry about with the Brown Act, so good. All right, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, actually, I appreciate what Katie brought to the table here. Most of the process that she's talking about has to do with retrofits. I would think that the health findings would move us to act with greater urgency rather than less. Look, changing paradigms takes time. That's exactly what this ordinance does. It sets us on a different path that takes years to implement. We've already talked and talked and talked about this ordinance. There's more talk to be had, but this is an important, this is an important change for us to make, I feel, because the climate crisis is urgent. It's extremely urgent and getting worse year by year. This is a small step, but you you know, when you're changing a paradigm, you need to start sooner than later. If we delay this a year, you know, we're just going to be that farther, much farther behind. You know, there's a lot of good that's come out of this conversation tonight, like, for instance, and I agree with you, Mayor, with Local four four seven, making lemonade out of lemons, losing jobs, but seeing that creating a water conservation possibility is a great way forward to preserve jobs and get an extra benefit out of the ordinance. I really like that. Councilmember Guerra has talked about the air quality benefits. He's exactly right. I sit with him on smack mid and we have a real problem in our area, and this will bring some relief, especially when we get to the retrofit part. You know, a lot of the angst that we hear in the testimony has to do with uncertainty, right? People are uncertain if they will get an infeasibility waiver. They're uncertain whether or not coffee roasting equipment will be included. They're uncertain about whether or not they'll be charged fees to apply for an infeasibility waiver. And I I think that that one is a valid concern. So I'd like to ask Jennifer Venema, has there been any discussion about what it would take to get an infeasibility waiver process started? Is it going to be a major fee for an industry or a coffee roaster or a pizza maker to apply for an infeasibility waiver?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Harris. The way it's outlined, we're not anticipating new fees or new procedures. It's would essentially, let me clarify that. We're going to work with the panel to develop the process over the next year. We're anticipating that what the infeasibility waiver process would look like is very similar to the alternative means process that our building division uses currently, which is no additional fee. And again, building official would make decisions based on council approved guidelines. And I'll just clarify for the limited exemptions as proposed, those are available with no additional application, no additional process. So we'll develop that process collaboratively for the infeasibility waiver, but there's no extra steps for the limited term exemptions.
You know, a lot of the questioning has come from the restaurant industry. And, you know, many restaurants already use hybrid equipment in their kitchens, some electric and some gas. It's actually sometimes easier to heat water with induction than with gas. We've we've heard a lot of testimony that it costs more to raise the temperature of water with electricity. And some people say it costs more with gas. You know, I mean, people have all kinds of quote facts here. I I I think that it would be really great to put out a fact sheet about those kinds of issues because there's a lot of misinformation running around about that. But the point I'm trying to make is that gas cooking in commercial kitchens or restaurants is probably a very small percentage of the greenhouse gas load, considering moving forward with all electric appliances in domiciles. You know, I mean, I I don't know if you have quantified that at all, but, you know, it would be possible, I think, to do a carve out for restaurants for gas cooking equipment, but not for like water heat or space heating. You know, when you say restaurants are exempt, does that mean that their air conditioners are exempt? Does that mean that their water heaters don't have to be heat pump water heaters?
No, actually, the limited exemption is very specific for cooking equipment in food establishment facilities. And for regulated affordable housing, it's also specific to water heating equipment. For manufacturing, it's specific to process loads. So that would mean that other aspects of the building are covered by the ordinance.
So, you know, if some industry representative came to you and said, there just simply is no equipment for coffee roasting that will meet state requirements and meet the demands of the workplace, is there any certainty that they'll get an infeasibility waiver?
Councilmember, that's the certainty that we will provide after working with restaurateurs and others that we've outlined in attachment for to develop those guidelines that council will adopt before the ordinance goes into effect.
Yeah, well, you know, Jennifer, change is frightening to most people. This is kind of a big topic that we're talking about. But, you know, as the mayor said, the risk versus the gains, I think it's a pretty clear argument when you look at the big picture, when you factor in health conditions, when you factor in air quality, when you factor in, you know, what we're all going to be struggling with with climate change overall. I don't think it's symbolic what we're doing, Councilmember Valenzuela. I think it's really important work and it's a start and it's very important. I think the work work that you are proposing is important as well because we can't leave behind the social justice and equity aspects of this. And I do appreciate the health findings piece. The last thing I want to say is this, on that technical panel for infeasibility, I feel strongly that a home builder, Home Building Association, Building Industry Association, home builders should be represented on that panel. And I would like to make an amendment to your motion, if you would accept it, Katie, to add another seat for the home building industry because that's a big, big industry that this that this ordinance will directly affect. And I do believe that they should have a voice at the table. So would you accept that amendment?
Sure. And Jennifer, are they, is there not a seat for home builders on the panel already?
We couldn't call them out specifically, but we did identify that we would have an affordable housing developer and other types of developer be happily include home builders as well.
Okay, yeah, I'll I accept that amendment, Councilmember Harris.
Well, thank you for that. Finish by saying, this this is an important move to make. We're starting with the easiest path forward, which is new construction. Obviously, retrofits is going to be a heavier lift, a bigger discussion. It's going to be a lot of work, quite frankly, but I'm in favor of taking this first step. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Let's get to Councilmember Loey Bang and then Mayor Pratamish.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. First and foremost, you know, I have to say thank you to Climate Commission for doing all the work and and getting us the information. And, you know, I I have to agree, kind of follow with Councilmember Valenzuela just brought up. But I I am a little bit concerned because in in San Francisco, the cost of retrofitting, they're estimating it to be anywhere between four to five billion dollars. So, you know, I think that's something that we we should also discuss when we talk about retrofitting to see what's really realistic and how how can we reach that? With that, with that said, when we talk about business, we're talking about individuals livelihood, especially small businesses. So yes, of course, everybody's going to be very concerned of what's going to happen, you know, in in five years. If if I'm a cook in a particular restaurant and I've saved up all my money that I'm going to start my own business, now such an ordinance is going to kind of, you know, push me back for about three to four years because I have to save up more. So that that's a concern. The feasibility waiver team, the panel, we we, you know, a better understanding of what the process is, was the timeline? Is it going to take a week? Is it going to take two weeks? Is it a three day thing? Is 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 that owner have to run back and forth to planning office, to this committee, to to kind of be able to get a sign off on on what they need to start up their business? And the same thing goes with the the appeal process. What what's a process timeline on that? One of my other biggest concern is that today, the cost of electricity is more than and and gas. So when we talk about affordable housing, are we increasing the utility rates for those residents versus what we have today? And considering we're going from two energy providing companies to one, and I and I asked, and I've brought this up in the past, what kind of commitment can we get to make sure that once everything is done, all of a sudden, we don't see this upward escalation of of cost of energy? So that's another concern of mine. And how is that going to affect some other issues like insurance? I know for a fact that the 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 liability insurance on an all electric car is higher than a non-electric car a as of as as of today. And and this is a fact. Is that also going to affect, once we push this through, is that going to affect on some of these costs for homeowners and business owners? So, yeah, that that's my my, those are my concerns. And I really think when we talk about this, there's the the commercial sector, the businesses, and then there's the residential sector. I think residents can adapt a lot faster than the the commercial aspects. And we have to take that into consideration. Someone that's been utilized using gas equipments in a kitchen for twenty twenty five years, they're not going to be able to switch to electric in overnight. Whereas in residential, that switch can be done much easier and and without any, you know, it might be a hard couple of weeks, but you 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 get used to it. Also, on the panel of the the this particular commission, having the manufacturers, I think, is great. Housing developers is a must, commercial developers, engineers. But I also think we need to have small restaurant operators on that. They need to have a seat because they're the ones that they're on on the ground. They're they're the frontline. To just get, you know, big companies or some kind of association that's representing their restaurants, I I don't think that that's enough because they're doing admin. And then it's hard for someone that does admin to represent people that are actually on the ground doing the work. And we shouldn't really focus on what the feedback from consultants are. We should actually reach out. So I agree with you, Councilmember Katie. We should engage the community. And we do have to spend our time to make sure they hear us and small, small businesses and residents and then make a decision. Because as I said, they're they're actually getting affected by whatever decision we make today. So based on that, that's all I have to say. So I don't know what the motion is right now. Are we voting on this tonight? We're proposing, we're postponing it next week.
We are voting on this. There is a live motion on the table to pass the ordinance with three, with several sets of amendments. Councilmember Valenzuela's amendments, laying out some additional findings, and then staging, if you will, the beginning of the process around retrofit. And the language is in front of us here. In addition to the language I proposed, give business, the business community a little bit more certainty in saying that the city council shall extend the the date of implementation if technology is not feasible and available. So we are voting tonight, yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add that? Add to that, is there any way on on the restaurant community that we could carve out just the cooking line that's in the kitchen? So the edge vac would be electric, hot water would be electric. And these are two major factors. If you want to look at the percentage of, you know, greenhouse emission effect that have a higher production rate versus the cooking line. I'd like to propose that we we carve out the the cooking line until we engage and find out that the technology is there and then and then revisiting it in twenty twenty five or where have you to see if we can add that to the.
Well, again, Councilmember Lo, I appreciate the the suggestion, but I I think we have addressed it in the motion, again, in this way. And I think it it's important to repeat. There will be exceptions. The ordinance will not effectively go into place, it will not go into place until the city council approves the exemptions. And so there is an opportunity to define in more detail under what circumstances the building official should consider whether or not the technology is feasible and available. And so there are a number of steps in the future that allow for the exact, the the exact consideration that you are talking about. But rather than take it out now, we want to at least try to set a market signal and to be aggressive in endeavoring. For example, like with the with the Innovation Walk Kitchen, to be able to help facilitate the creation of the technology. But there is every opportunity to back off or delay if the technology is not feasible. So it's a slightly different approach than what you are suggesting, but I think it gets us to the same place.
Well, I I have one other concern, and I think one of the callers brought this up, that if this is excluding the existing building, then would that give an upper hand to the landlords of existing restaurants to ask for a higher rent versus, let's say, a new restaurant that has all electric? How how can we get in front of that potential issue? And we're seeing it, it's 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 a it's, and we're seeing it right now that it's been affecting a lot of communities with the cannabis industry. Every landlord prefers that they rent their facility to a cannabis operator because they can charge more rent, you know, maybe a a three X or four X over the the market rate.
We we are not talking about changing the nature of our businesses here. We are talking about adaptive technology to be able to transition in a purposeful way to electricity. I'm not, I don't.
So, Mr. Mayor, if if there's a new building that's all electric and I have an old building and I own it and it's all gas and I have someone that wants to start their own restaurant, knowing that they cannot get into a. Knowing that they cannot get into a new building because it's all electric. Cooking line. One would think. I can ask for a higher rent. Because either you can have this that you're used to and you're comfortable with working with. Or you can go to that new building that's all electric and you have no idea how to operate those equipments.
Well, that again presumes that. We will not. Be able to adapt to the new electric, electric technology for new buildings or new restaurants. In in a timely way, again, with the fail safe that we can always extend. The timeframe if the technology is not available. So I get your hypothetical, but our plan is to make this work. Not to put. Our businesses in untenable situations.
Well, if I could, Mayor, as well, I think part of what maybe in Councilmember Laloey's. Concern, we could identify and try to address through the community process. That's a part of this motion because none of this will go into effect, as the mayor said, until things come back to us next year with the feasibility waivers. And then we've got this coming. So I think. I there's a lot of different ways. I mean, my immediate thing was commercial work control, but I know not everybody's there yet. But I think there's a lot of different ways we could try to tackle those concerns because frankly, there's the same concerns for residential building costs. They call it rent evictions in the Bay tenants together, you know, when they start talking about decarb. So I think there's a lot of questions there. That's part of why I want to engage the community in a discussion about. Contingencies and how we could try to mitigate those potentially bad impacts.
Go ahead, Councilmember. You still have the floor? Look, Sean, yes.
Yeah. Again, I think moving forward, saving the, you know, saving mother earth, we're all on the same page. How we get there? I think we need to be very careful, especially with our small businesses. So those are my concerns and. Residential, but being being. Being a business owner, I I know the anxiety that. Comes up when we want to change something and. There's going to be that panic, and the more education and the more we listen to what the problems are. I think it's going to be vital. I mean, just tonight, we found out that if you want to pull. The technology is not there right now. So. We didn't even know that till tonight. So. So there there's there's some unknown factor, and then also a commitment from S M U D on rate increase. Is it going to match the inflation? Or is it? You know, what what are we calculating? That's my my other concern. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer. Ms. Venom.
Mayor, if I just may respond briefly to just a few of the questions that were raised. First off, in terms of their request, Councilmember Laloey about exempting cooking equipment only. The ordinance does that. That's what the limited exemption does, limited exemption for cooking equipment and food establishments. For the next four and a half years. Plus the commitment to further work with stakeholders, including restaurants, small restaurant reps. To develop the ongoing process and timelines. In terms of the S M U D rate, we do have S M U D on the line with the adoption of S M U D's twenty thirty zero carbon plan. They've committed to limits rate increases to inflation. So if there's further questions, we can have the S M U D staff jump in as well. Happy to answer other questions. We have been talking with folks from the pool association and the industry. Appreciate them calling in today. This information we were aware of, and we do intend to include them in the infeasibility process as well. The problem is very specific to in-ground spas and does not apply to all pool pump technology.
You're on mute, Mayor.
I'm sorry, we have, we have two more members, and if S M U D wants to. Clarify anything about its rate commitments, that's appropriate. Ms. Cutlip, why don't you answer that right now? Then we've got two more. Members, and then we're going to take a vote, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very brief. Jennifer is absolutely right. We have committed as part of our twenty thirty. Plan adoption to keep our rates. In line with inflation. So we've made that commitment publicly. We purposely built our plan to be flexible, to take into consideration. Rates as well as grid reliability as we go down the path to twenty thirty. So we have a strong commitment to that. And we'll keep that in mind as we start moving forward. So thank you.
Quick question, is the is the rate twenty thirty? Does the rate, taking the rates into considerations? Kick in twenty thirty and on? Or does it start with, let's say, twenty twenty six?
No, so our rates are adopted by our board of directors as a community-owned. Utility, our rates have to go through a very public review process. And we do look at it periodically. So we are currently are in a rate process now. Where we will be looking at a reaction later this year. This is based on actions. And approvals that occurred by our board last year in twenty, actually, two years ago in twenty nineteen. So. We do space it out when we take an action. There is that public review process. And then there's usually a buffer period before those rate actions actually take place.
And those rate actions, are they a ra- rate increase before they go?
They, yeah, they are rate increases, but again, those rate increases are. On par with inflation. So looking at staying at the rate of inflation or even under inflation. If feasible, and we have maintained, I will just call out. Our rates are thirty five percent lower than other utilities throughout the state.
Pretty lucky to.
Thank you.
We're more than lucky to have S M U D as our. Municipal utility enables us to be more aggressive for the very reason that Ms. Cutlip just stated.
All right, Mr. Mayor, as we're talking about this. It it's ironic how some of the states like Texas, Louisiana, Kentucky, Nevada, and Ohio, I'm hearing that's going to get on that. They're actually passing a law forbidding. This kind of conversation. So it's. It's so odd how different cities or states think they're completely different.
We're not Texas. Let's move on. I'm sorry, Councilmember Vang and then Mayor Proton Ashby, and then we're going to cast a vote.
Thanks, Mayor. It is nine oh one. I will try to keep my comments short and questions short as much as I can. So first. Just have a few comments and just a few questions. I just want to. Say thank you to the many callers and small minority businesses that actually called in tonight. I just thank you. For sharing your concerns and really letting us know some of the realities and challenges on the ground. If we are to move forward with this new ordinance. Jennifer, I also want to take this, you know, opportunity to say thank you to you too. Because your work did get us here today while there may be disagreement on the council. I also want to acknowledge your work. In getting us here today as well. And Mayor, thank you so much for your amendments. I appreciate you making those amendments to address some of the concerns we heard from our local businesses and also equity advocates as well. I just had some questions and comments. Jennifer, the first question is. Because I've been hearing that forty five cities have already implemented something similar. I wanted to know, have there been been any studies done on just lessons learned from the implementation of these various ordinances? And if yes, do you know what some of those are? I'm just curious if there's been any. Analysis or any. You know, couple pager reports on some of the lessons learned as cities are moving forward with this.
Yes, Councilmember Vang, there's been a lot of work and discussion, and I think that Councilmember Valenzuela raised a lot of. The issues and comments because this is so new with. A lot of work in the midst, a lot of the learnings and lessons are coming in those peer-to-peer. Staff to staff or community member to community member communication. So we have been engaging with city peers at cities of L A, San Diego, City of Berkeley, Oakland, trying to learn from them. We are participating through the Urban Sustainability Directors Network with. Also groups like the Building Decarbonization Coalition. Last week, we just had a talk with Rocky Mountain Institute. And also reaching out to folks like the Greenlining Institute to trying to learn where those lessons are being compiled. So great framework from greenlining about existing building electrification that Councilmember Valenzuela has shared. So. I think there's information available that we are seeking to build from and working in real time. No two pager yet, a part of the task. Once this. Direction is confirmed, we would be bringing on a consultant team to assist us. So we have that capacity. To really deliver on the work that's needed on the existing building strategy and a lot of that engagement and sharing and vetting of lessons with stakeholders.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. I appreciate that. I think it's, you know, for me, it's just really important that. As we move forward and pass an ordinance, there's just. You know, I'm just always worried about unintended consequences or us creating an environment that could hurt local minority-owned businesses or. Leave families behind, right? And I think, I think that is at the forefront. I hear that from my colleagues that are for and maybe are on the borderline. So I appreciate that. And I just think also learning from the other cities, while we are very different and unique, is important. It's reassuring to hear that you are in conversation with the city partners with other cities to learn what are some of the lessons. Because I think there's a lot that that we could learn. The other piece I wanted to mention, and I think we heard, we heard it from the callers. As well as that, as you all know, we are still recovering from a pandemic. And it's really important to have guardrails to protect and support our local minority businesses and and their livelihoods, right? So good policy does matter. I really appreciate this ordinance that it is a good first step, but I think just being intentional. So, Mayor, I do again, I just want to uplift your amendment and say thank you for those amendments and hearing out. Our our constituent citywide. I think all of you are. Committed, right, to climate justice and reducing greenhouse gas emission. I just do have a question. Actually, this question is for my colleague, Councilwoman Valenzuela as well. I I support the ordinance with your amendment, but I just wanted some clarity. Because I do believe having a sound plan for implementation, community outreach strategy, as Councilmember Shanir would would say. Or the how is really important, right? We can be aggressive at pushing something, but if we're not intentional, we could have. We can be creating unintended consequences and harmful effects for our communities that we're trying to fight for. So. In particular, for me, I think support and resources for our minority businesses, for displaced workers, which we heard earlier. And our low-income households is key. And I like for us to add language. That we commit to this, right, that we're going to commit to some kind of support and resources. And I don't know if this is already part of your amendment, but wanted to get clarity on that because everything sounds so high level right now. And so I just want to make sure that that language is in there because I am worried. I I want to move forward with this. I think we got to reach our goals. But that we're, as we're moving forward, we are committed as a council to provide the support and the resources for our minority-owned businesses, displaced workers and. Low-income households. So if you can reconfirm that motion, that that. That motion that you made on the table, I just want to make sure that it includes those language. And if it does, then I would be happy to support what's on the table, so.
Absolutely, Councilmember Vang, and I just want to say that it's my goal, and we'll talk about this more, the sixty day review for this timeline for step two to coincide with the timeline for the feasibility. Study and the work that they're going to do with that technical committee so that we can be aware of any hiccups and any potential issues before. We actually start implementing this new ordinance. So, yes, that's definitely part of the strategy, and I will say that. In a lot of my work in my day job role, I work with folks who've done the San Joaquin Valley pilot, folks who are doing the San Francisco. Folks in L A, folks in other parts of state, including the Greenlining Issue Institute, as Jennifer mentioned, and one thing is consistent is. That it's not been the same in any two jurisdictions. And then every jurisdiction, there has been some unique issue that's been identified, some unique problem that's had to been solved to ensure. That the impact wasn't inequitable and that people were able to access the technology. So. I just want to say to your point that there have been a lot of really great lessons learned, particularly in the San Joaquin Valley pilots, which is the other central city. Central Valley cities that have been doing this work for the last couple of years with public utilities. Commission funding, and I think that we can learn a lot from that, and this is where that lesson comes from is. Let's really do the work on engagement on a concurrent timeline so we can get the lessons in time to make any changes that might be needed.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, Mayor Proton.
Thanks, Mayor. Let me just start by saying that I appreciate hearing all of my. Colleagues' comments. I'm glad that I'm last because. I feel like some of it was persuasive to me, but also. My biggest concerns here are timing, cost, and feasibility. It feels like really bad timing, especially for restaurants. It's literally the worst time in the history, modern day history for restaurants. And even though we're delaying it, we're talking about massive changes to how they do business. I. Think Councilmember Laloey's comments were spot on. I don't know how we expect them to do this. I I don't know how. Not only just from a approach of cost, which is probably my biggest concern. Which I think Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Valenzuela have both expressed concern about as well and are trying to include in this language. I'm also concerned about process, like what a chef deems feasible. Versus what our building inspector deems feasible for cooking. It's two totally different things. And they're not industry experts. We're not industry experts. No one on here is a restaurant industry expert. And I know that the chefs at some of our top. Restaurants feel that they need. Certain tools. And I just, I don't feel comfortable that this might take that that away from some of them. And that a building inspector would be making that decision. And I, you know, like, for example, I heard Jennifer say. That they intend to add the spa industry when Councilmember Harris asked. I mean, we just learned about the spa industry tonight, and she said, yeah, well, we heard about them before and we intend to include them, but but they weren't included yet. But you intended to, but they're not yet. But how many more spa industries are out there that we just haven't heard from yet? That. This council won't hear from. I would be infinitely more comfortable with everything that Councilmember Valenzuela has said if it wasn't an official motion tonight. If it was direction to staff. And the reason I feel that way is because. It's a bit of a throwaway motion anyway, is it doesn't get implemented until we vote on it again in twenty twenty two as part of the. Building code, or at least that's the way I'm understanding it. City manager Chan, can you just answer that piece as briefly as possible or somebody on your team?
Jennifer, I think Ms. Venema is the. Is the person on city manager's staff. Go ahead.
Yes. So to respond to your ordinance, the ordinance question, it's not. Throwaway ordinance. This would be a local. That's not enforceable until the until the effective date of twenty twenty three. We will need to, yes, we adopt it next year. But with the local ordinance that's providing the certainty to bring new stakeholders to the table so that we can get the perspective of folks like you identifying such as. A restaurant expertise.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, thank you, Jennifer. I I guess I'm just, you know, I've been on the council a long time. Never needed motions before. To give staff direction to do something to be prepared in the year. So I'm not sure I understand why we need a motion tonight. To tell staff to be prepared for a vote that's next year. I think Councilmember Valenzuela has laid out a really good. Roadmap that builds on the mayor's strong framework of what he wants to have achieved. But none of this. Matters tonight. We take a vote and tomorrow it changes nothing. But next year in twenty twenty two, if we take the same vote, then it does. And I'm just really uncomfortable with that. Because I don't understand, there are so many unanswered questions. And there are so many answers that we will get, like the fact that the mayor has said we've had fifty meetings. But Jennifer, you just said this will give us the chance to engage restaurant experts. Why weren't restaurant experts engaged in the fifty meetings? So I I'm just, it, there's a lot of. Things that I just don't understand, and maybe it's because I'm not on lawn ledge, so I haven't had the benefit of walking through all of those. Pieces. I don't understand what isn't written in here, like what groups you're planning on adding to the infeasibility. I am very worried about marginalized communities. Very worried. I was there. You know? Food stamps, low-income housing. I know what it's like, and I've said this many times. Some people know what a green envelope from S M U D means, and some people don't. And right now, judge yourself based on whether or not you know that answer. But everybody who knows that answer is going to be worried about this dang ordinance. I'm going to tell you right now. Because it's whether or not you can pay that bill. And it's whether or not you have to put down a massive deposit that you may or may not be able to afford. To get that electricity. And I am very uncomfortable with that because I know what that green envelope means. I've received it many times when I was a young, single mom. I'm worried about small businesses. I'm worried about the minority-owned businesses. I am really worried about the workers that we haven't solved for here. I am. Worried about unintended consequences. I think this is extremely important. I do. I think this is extremely important, I do, and I applaud the mayor, because he's pushing the envelope, which is exactly what a good mayor does, push us all to be uncomfortable and try to get things moving faster. It's what we need in climate control. But I don't think we need to take a vote tonight. I think we ought to be giving staff direction. I think the things that came out of Councilmember Laloie's mouth and Councilmember Harris's mouth were just as important as the motions that have been put in pin by Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Steinberg. And I think all should be treated equally by staff as we move forward over the next year. I think Councilmember Vang's concerns about minority businesses should be equally yoked. I don't think there's any reason to narrow the dialogue right now. We ought to be broadening the dialogue. We ought to be trying to reach as many people as we can. I really want to see this process work, and I'm inclined to vote for it next year, when it's fully vetted, but I don't see a pathway, I don't see how it's responsible, I don't see how you answer to people right now, when we don't know what the cost increase would be. We, we don't know what this means for marginalized communities, we don't know what it means for businesses, and I'm sorry, ignoring the pandemic, we just reached an orange tier. Remember, we were supposed to be there at Halloween. We just got there. I don't, I don't understand placing such a financial burden in the out years on the most vulnerable businesses in our region right now. It's just unwise. So Councilmember Valenzuela, I really love the direction you're driving this, and if your motion were direction, I would be 100% in with you, but I just am having a really hard time with feeling like we're going to nail our feet to the ground today for a vote that's in 2022. It feels very uncomfortable to me, and I think there's so much, as a lawyer would say, discovery left to be learned, that I'm having a hard time writing my closing argument without having done that first part of the deal here, so really challenging.
Mayor Protim, I, I'd like to maybe conclude by trying to answer your, your rational concern, because I, I get what you're saying, but if on the one hand, you're saying we don't need to vote tonight because it won't take effect for a long period of time anyways, then what is the fear? In other words, I, I would think you might have greater concern if the ordinance was going to go into effect on, say, January 1, 2022. Here is the difference between a motion tonight and passing the ordinance versus direction to staff. If we were to do the latter, as you suggest, I guarantee you that the level of engagement from the various stakeholders will not be nearly as great as if we set a clear statutory direction tonight, recognizing all the off-ramps. All of the, as I said earlier, the stakeholders on the technical advisory group are dominated, and appropriately so, by the business community. And the ordinance, you're right, does not go into effect until the city council takes their recommendations and puts it into law. But by setting the directions tonight, clearly, we'll have an engaged community. I fear we won't have as engaged a community if the council were to punt after. Let me finish, please. After two years of deliberation by a climate commission, the city council's declaration of a climate emergency, and specific direction nine months ago for our staff to bring back this very ordinance. That's my response. Appreciate it.
I appreciate the response, Mayor. Let me make, let me say this. I'd like to make a substitute motion, given your input. Here's my substitute motion, that today, everything presented is taken by our city staff as direction. To come back in a year, in 2022, having answered everything that Councilmember Valenzuela has laid out, and adding in everything that Councilmember Laloie, and everything that Councilmember Harris, and Gara, and Vang, all also included in the discussion parameters, and if, if need be, even with a six-month report back, or a sixty-day report back from Council on Councilmember Valenzuela's thesis, and another six-month report back, and then one year from now, we take the vote. That is my substitute motion, Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
I, I cannot support that motion, but let's vote. Take a vote on, on the motion. I urge a no vote, and I hope that the members who have spoken publicly in favor of the ordinance will continue to stick with the ordinance.
May I make a quick comment, Mayor? I raise my hand. I don't know if you can.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, and I totally understand where you're coming from, Mayor Protim. If you've watched Lawn Ledge the last two times this has come up, that's basically been what I've been asking for. So, but I also see value in solidifying and formalizing the direction in a motion, and I only say that because it has, and it's just new, and, and so I don't think it's in any malfeasance or like intent to do something wrong, but I've struggled a little bit with getting this done, and I feel like there's more in this motion that will give me something that I feel like I can grab onto and work with, with the stakeholders I know want to help us do this well over the next year, and that functionally, it doesn't change anything. It feels like it sticks one way, it doesn't another, where it's like, one side, we pass the motion that I presented, and we still have to vote on it again in a year, and the other side, we don't. So I just wanted to put that caveat out to explain why I, I won't vote your motion, even though it is consistent with what I've said in the last two Lawn Ledge hearings on this, just because I think we need to provide more clear direction and kind of give staff that certainty of like, this is what we're doing.
I understand. It probably would have been good if they would have listened to you in Lawn Ledge.
Let, let us vote on the substitute motion. Mayor Protim urges an I-vote. I urge a no vote. Please call the roll.
Mayor Protim Ashby?
What are we voting on, guys?
You're voting on a substitute motion to give staff direction as opposed to pass the ordinance. That's the substitute motion.
Yeah, my substitute motion is to make all of Councilmember, all of the mayors, and Councilmember Valenzuela, and Councilmember Vang, and Councilmember Harris, and Gara, and yours, Councilmember Laloie, comments direction to staff to bring back in sixty days the components that were asked for, in six months for an update, and in one year for adoption, rather than passing the ordinance.
Call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Merchantier?
No.
Councilmember Gata?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. Thank you. Let's now call the roll on the main motion.
Mayor Protim Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Laloie?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Merchantier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, the motion passes seven to two. Thank you all very, very much for great debate, great discussion, and big progress. Thank you all very much. All right, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Are there, is there public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Yes, I have three callers, Mr. Mayor. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Sandoval, I'm in District Three. The city council approved a motion to create thirty-one point five million dollars in one-time affordable housing prioritizing investment in business quarters such as Northgate Boulevard. It also includes two million dollars in services for women and children. Northgate Boulevard already has an abundance of affordable housing. Also, if this is a move to build the type of shelter proposed by Councilman Harris, please bear in mind that women and children deserve real housing, not tough sheds without plumbing, three yards from an elementary school. There's this large homeless camp off of Northgate Boulevard as you enter 160, and it would be extremely unfair to put a shelter on the other end of Northgate Boulevard as proposed in the past. Northgate Boulevard has been so long neglected and is very difficult to even walk down. We were promised stoplights and turn signals, which never materialized. Our ne- our neighborhood deserves to be treated with respect. I ask the city council, walk down Northgate Boulevard, or ride a bike, use a wheelchair, or walker, and see how dangerous it is before more congestion is brought to our neighborhood. Northgate Boulevard is more than a corridor and the freeway, and more than a corridor to the freeway, and needs much improvement. The study should be done to ensure there's equitable distribution of affordable housing and shelters throughout the city. My brother Dwayne Sandoval died in 1965 when he was walking down Northgate Boulevard and hit by, and, and hit by a hit-and-run driver. His passing sparked my civic involvement. I was thirteen. Fast forward, I'm now sixty-eight, and the very street on which Dwayne was killed continues to be very dangerous due to no streetlights.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I will continue to advocate for safe travel in my neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, city council. I'm, I'm, I think of Civil Code, Maxims of Jurisprudence, which says a law never requires impossibilities. There is much that was said during your comment in the prior agenda item that I hope you will allow me to present here, but one of the first things is, vote here today, vote six months from now, no enforcement until the CEC says you can, and the building commission can reject this entirely. I'm, I'm of note here that Member Harris is concerned about facts the public has displayed, so any fact sheets, any fact sheets should be approved by fourth graders only, because it's their future. They need to be able to say, have them approve, approve my facts on what it actually costs to go to electricity. Rate increases happen immediately when you use electricity, by three times, so, yeah. We need to have the, the fourth graders of all Sacramento Unified School districts have a say in that. Also, I'm a forty-year manufacturing engineering technologist. I want to be on that committee that works out the feasibility of a restaurant equipment. That'll be one, but when you, when I do that, you will find out it's not feasible for a single mom to cook. She has to earn a living cooking for her children, and the cost will go up, because she's going to cook at 6:30, because she didn't get home and work until 5:00. I don't know how much time I have left, but pay attention to that, and also smud ward eight. Look into smud ward eight. That's CCAs who are taking our clean energy, smud is selling our clean energy to. Do I have any more time?
You do not. Your time is expired.
Okay, well, get on it and think about the fourth graders before you vote.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please, and this is my final caller. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, City Manager. My name is Michael Harris, born, born and raised in the great city here, Sacramento. It's good to enjoy the first real heat right after Memorial Day. The reason I'm calling in tonight, matters not on the agenda, is this entire month of June is very, very important. The idea that what some of us saw today in Tulsa, President Biden's recognition, the first president to recognize the massacre that happened in Tulsa, Oklahoma, ve- very special. I encourage you all to listen to that, his message, and some of the executive orders, particularly what he did a little earlier, Executive Order 13985. So as, you know, as I step down off of the National Juneteenth Board, representing the western region of the United States, where we have Juneteenth now, a holiday, paid holiday for employees of Hawaii, and Washington, and Oregon, I feel some kind of way that here in California, we haven't got the holiday done. There's not very many cities following the, the track along the path of City of, of L.A., New York, and many other cities and states around the nation, making it a paid holiday. So the idea that in my whole town, there's absolutely no conversation about making it a paid holiday, and, and I take responsibility. I put some paperwork together, sent it in, but tonight, I'm going to spend the whole month of, of June, as I make my swan song on the national board, I'm re, I'm stepping off of that to take the Sacramento Historical Society Board and, and drill down here at home, because there's some challenges, racism is a public health crisis at county level, and certainly at city level. So we need, we have some work to do, and finally, I'll say this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
My, my final comment is that we, we just, we don't have to be afraid to say black. I mean, we've been minorities, we've been colored, we've been all kind of things, but we don't say black.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there council ideas or questions? Say on electrification. Just kidding. On any, on, on any other subject.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce and recognize Mr. Councilmember Jennings as a sponsor of Juneteenth, which is happening on Saturday, June 19, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in William Land Park. I'm super excited, because it's going to be the first big in-person event that I've been at in a real long time post-vaccination, so I hope folks will come out and join, and also, obviously, to recognize today's the first day of Pride Month, and just to say to all of our LGBTQ plus community members that we love you, love is love, and hope you have an amazing time celebrating.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I want to say one thing. To the people of the city of San Jose and the Santa Clara County Transit Authority, I think I have that name right, they suffered an unspeakable tragedy, that's, I hate the word, tragedy, unacceptable event last week in their community, where eight innocent public servants were killed by some madman with, with a gun, another gun, guns, guns, guns. And I just want to say, on behalf of the city of Sacramento, I've talked to council, to Mayor Licardo, but on behalf of all of us, we are with you in every way, in any way, to support the great city of San Jose for all that you were going through, and all the victims and their families. We just are so sorry. I just wanted to, wanted to say that on behalf of our city. If there's any, nothing else to come before the city council and I, thank you for a very productive meeting. We are adjourned.